All right, so I've got 5:30, so we'll call the meeting to order. If you guys will please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone who's here and who's online for joining us tonight at the General School Board Semi-Annual Retreat. We have Dr. Miller on the phone. Dr. Miller, can you hear us?
I can.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so we'll go ahead and get started through our agenda, and I will turn it over to Dr. Pierce to kind of kick us off.
Sounds great. So, given that this is the first board retreat following the swearing-in of new board members and returning board members, it's always a good opportunity for the board to review current processes and procedures and to talk about things that you feel like are going well as a board in terms of structures and systems and processes and talk about opportunities or things that you might want to change. So that's really the big purpose of the retreat tonight. As you see from the agenda, the big topics for discussion and review are board relations, norms, and communications, board superintendent team and how we function together as a team, board processes, priorities, and planning. And then, board members asked for a couple of specific topics to also be included on the agenda tonight for discussion, and that's school safety and behavior and discipline. And then, we'll finish up with talking about the process and timeline for the deputy's successor superintendent search, which is about to commence. So, really, that's why we're here tonight, and Gabe and I worked together to put together a discussion guide to help facilitate the conversation. And so, there are some hard copies on the table there, and in the copies that the board received, there's links to a bunch of different policies and documents, so we can reference and review those and discuss any potential updates. So as we go through this, I will bring up those links on the screen just for reference. But with that, if there's anything else that you want to say, or otherwise, we can just get right into topic one.
Yeah, I think I'm ready to get into it. Everybody else is, so, okay.
Okay. So, the first topic is board relations, norms, and communications, and we carved out about 15 minutes for this. And so, this is really the opportunity, I think, for the board to review a couple of big pieces of policy, board powers and duties, and also, I should mention, all of the hard copies of these documents are included in the binders that the board has, and they're all tabbed with the numbers that correspond to the discussion guide. So, in this section, we would talk about powers and duties of the board, duties of individual board members versus duties of the board as a body. And probably starting there, and then get into the Board Code of Ethics, which is Policy 1500, give the board an opportunity to look that over and see if there's any particular questions or areas that the board wants to focus on. And then, last time, we had new board members join the board. The board went through a process of developing some board norms that accompany the Code of Ethics. And so, those board norms are also included here for reference, so the board can look at those and discuss the questions that you have about what you've developed or any changes that you might want to make. So with that, I'm thinking that I'll go ahead and bring up those, like, you know, the first policy, and then, the board can just have a conversation about overall interests that you have regarding kind of board relations as a whole, and then if there's any questions on the powers and duties of the board as a whole, or the duties of individual board members that you want to surface and talk about.
Okay.
Okay, so just, you know, really briefly, and I know you have this right in front of you, but I'll say 1500, I think, does a good job of highlighting the big key areas that the Board of Directors is responsible for, and that's community representation, policy development, operations assessment, fiscal management, and dispute resolution as specified by law. So, and this policy also does allude to the Code of Ethics that the board members subscribe to. So I just think it's, like I said, a good opportunity for some general reflection, discussion, questions, anything about kind of the big core areas that the board's responsible for as a body.
So I'll just start real quick. So I thought this document gives us a good visual of just kind of the things we're responsible for as a Board of Directors, and having some new board members on, this just kind of gives us the first look at what we're doing as a Board of Directors. So that's why we have this document up. I know everybody got this in their packets. I don't know if anybody had any specific questions or changes, but just wanted to make sure everybody saw this, and we saw it collectively as a board together.
I didn't have any questions or concerns about this one.
Dr. Miller, any, you good?
Yeah, I'm good. It's kind of a little weird, there's a delay in the video, but it's fine.
All right. And while Dr. Pierce pulls up the next one, again, it's kind of a similar situation. So this, again, too, is just to kind of give us a guideline of what each individual board member has as duties. Of course, the main piece in here, at least, that I wanted to make sure everybody was on board with, was ultimately, we, as individual board members, obviously don't speak for the board, and so just make sure that's the piece that everybody definitely understands. But also, a good policy, especially for Brittany and Dr. Miller, to take a look at, too, as well as those duties, so. Any?
Nope.
No question.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, perfect.
That's probably a good idea, because sometimes, I guess, we get that, or in an email, if you email somebody, maybe add that line in there that you're speaking on behalf of yourself, not the board. You know, that's probably a good, good, happy email.
Yeah, okay.
That's good. I would just add, you know, as we talk later about board communication protocols, which sometimes those aren't necessarily written down, they're just the agreements in practice that the board has in terms of responding to emails and things like that. Some of what's here in these policies can help, like you're doing right now, inform what that practice is when it comes to response to emails or things like that. The other thing we're going to talk about a little bit later is just our current processes around agenda development and the presentations that staff bring forward. So this policy also speaks to the individual duties of board members to review the agenda and study materials that are distributed prior to the meeting, and so just, because that can help the meeting run more efficiently. And I know that there were some questions during board orientation that Dr. Miller had and Ms. Glenn Hill had about kind of the processes around staff. You know, we provide you with the whole presentation, and then we give you the whole presentation in the board meeting, and maybe there's some opportunity to think about efficiency in that process. So just a little tickler to remember that when we get to that part of the conversation.
Awesome. I think we can move to the Code of Ethics if you have that handy. And again, it's going to be the same here. The Code of Ethics, again, this is just an opportunity for us as a board. We've got the Code of Ethics up here. Everybody got it. I don't know if anybody had any questions or comments or changes to it, but again, it's just, this whole section is kind of putting it all together for us as a new board collectively to kind of walk through a couple important documents, so we've taken a look at them and know what they're about, so. And I think this, we just amended this one this year, I think, right? Earlier this year?
You know, I guess, if memory serves, we did amend it, but for format only.
Oh, yeah.
I don't recall there being any substantive content amended on this one.
Okay.
And I think maybe I would just highlight a couple of things that I think we've already discussed a little bit is, you know, recognizing that the authority of the whole board is when the board's assembled in a public meeting making a decision. And so, you know, when individual board members are contacted, it's really not appropriate to make any personal promises or commitments or convey any board opinion until the board has actually talked about the issue at hand and made a determination collectively as a body. And so, that's kind of connected to number nine, which is arriving at conclusions after discussing all aspects of the issue in the board meeting and the board's assembled together. So I don't know if there's any others that you want to just touch on or highlight, or if anybody has questions about any of them, or if everybody is good with what is currently written here.
All right. I'm not seeing any discussion. Dr. Miller, feel free to jump in if you have any questions or anything at any point. You don't have to wait to be called on, since you're...
Fair enough. I appreciate that. Now, it's good. I would get over to look fine.
Okay. Awesome. So the final one, in Board Norms and Operating Principles, is our document on board norms that we developed when we initially got together as a board two years ago. So this was sent out for any changes, updates. I mean, I thought it looked fine. I don't know if anybody else had any questions or updates to it.
Nope. That's great.
Just for everybody's benefit, I think, how this, this isn't technically in policy. The board developed it as they're working, operating towards norms to kind of talk about how they're going to put that Code of Ethics into action throughout board interactions, whether they're in a meeting or outside of meetings. So this is a document that we've just made copies of, and we always have it on the dais during board meetings, just as a reminder for the board about what you all came up with together.
The whole grudge is bringing when you get mad at us.
Don't hold a grudge. Got it.
Okay. Perfect. Well, we're moving right along, then. We'll move on to B, so Board Superintendent Team.
Okay. So in this next section, it really, it's getting into our current processes that are grounded in policy that help us function together as a board superintendent team, and so kind of clarity around roles, responsibilities, board's role, superintendent's role, accountability structures, reporting structures, all those kinds of things. So just to start us off, there is a policy language, Policy 1600, that speaks to the process around developing annual goals and objectives and having an operational strategic plan. And of course, we do have that, an operational strategic plan that has goals and objectives. There's a process whereby the objectives are updated annually and approved by the board, and then a process where the board holds me and my team accountable for meeting those objectives. And so, for example, tonight, in executive session, we'll be looking at the objectives and talking about the progress that we've made to date. And then, again, when the board meets in June in executive session, I'll be providing that update to you. So this is all part of this structure that's grounded in policy. And then, of course, my team and I make reports all throughout the year to the board tied to the strategic plan, and that all is reflected in the board annual calendar. That calendar gets developed in January, or excuse me, in June of each year, as we talk about updating it in June, and then it gets formally presented and shared with the board. And some of this, I'm just being real, just want to be really explicit about, because I'm remembering real clearly, like, when Mr. Valentine and Mr. Galbert joined the board, you know, we're kind of midstream in a year of this whole development of objectives and accountability structures and the work that's underway that my team and I are doing. And I remember the question being like, well, when do we get a way in on, you know, new priorities and things that we would like to see? So it's just important to recognize that, you know, we're kind of midstream in a year, but there's also flexibility. So we want to, we wouldn't, like, at this point in time redo the strategic plan for '23, '24, but there's certainly opportunities for new board members to set priorities, and we'll be able to do that. And then, a lot of that will be able to inform the work that we do to develop the plan for next year.
Yep.
Okay, so this is the actual policy language, 1600. There's also, I just think it's helpful to take a look at 1520, which is real short, and it just highlights board superintendent relations and highlights, you know, how it's so important that the board and superintendent have a close, effective working relationship. And of course, I care about this personally, because I'm a superintendent, and I also am thinking about the next step with the deputy successor search process. The board will certainly be wanting to think about that as you look toward hiring my successor. So when it comes to this relationship, I think WASDA does a good job of talking about it's the board's job to say what you want done, what you want to see accomplished, and it's the superintendent's job to work with their team to figure out how to get that done. And so, and I think that's well reflected on our strategic objectives, because the objective is what you want done, and the board's approve that. And then, we put together the plan of how we're doing it and present that to you, and you hold us accountable for that through the structures that we have in place. So, anyway, it's just, it's important that, you know, we recognize one another's roles, because that's really how we can best collectively, is that board superintendent team serve students and families in our community. So that's all real clear and functioning well. Just bumpy at a big time. So I wanted to just touch on, like I said, it's always kind of interesting when board members are coming on at this point in time, and there's, and we're midstream in a process, but I wanted to just remind everyone that the board typically does develop priorities in June, at the June retreat. And then, those priorities help inform the update of the strategic plan. And so, I provided that copy of the presentation where the board approved the '23, '24 strategic plan in September of 2023. And on Slide 6, it showed the priorities that the board identified at the June retreat in 2023, because the board will do this again in June this year of 2024. And what the board does through that process is a self-assessment. There's a process where WASDA has a self-assessment tool, where board members individually weigh in on how you think the board is doing in terms of focusing on the standards for board governance. And that self-assessment helps to, the board to identify priority areas connected to those board standards. And then, those priority areas get woven into the strategic plan for that year. So just as a reminder for everybody, these were the boards identified priorities in 2023. These are the WASDA standards. And then, these were the things that you said you wanted to make sure happened. So many of this exact same wording, much of this exact same wording, shows up as an objective on the strategic plan. I'll just give a quick example. One of the priorities, the board says, to ensure respectful treatment of all individuals, including students, staff, families, community members, and board members. So a piece of work that we have accomplished this year is the development of a community policy. So the what is this ensuring the respectful treatment, and a part of the how is that development of policy, which the board passed early in this year. I mentioned the strategic plan. I know you have that copy there. You've all seen it, just for the benefit of everybody, just bringing that up and reminding everyone that how we've done it for the past several years is that we've got seven big strategic goals, three of which are focused on students, the other four goals really serve our student-focused goals. Those remain the same every year, but the objectives get updated every year. And so, this is the process the board goes through to say, this is what we'd like to see happen, and then I figure out with my team how we're going to do these things. And then, we've got the performance indicators and targets, and this is part of how the board expresses the results that they expect for the organization. And this was updated this year as well. A board, I believe, it was in a study session in September where the board reviewed what the current indicators were, and that was discussed, and then I updated it, and the board reviewed this update. And then, finally, I mentioned before the board meeting calendar, which gets that every year. It's a working document. Things get added to it throughout the year. We usually start with a pretty skeletal version of the board meeting calendar, and it includes a lot of the reports that staff and I provide connected to our strategic goals. And then, as other topics come up, as the board has other things they want to talk about, those just get added to the agenda on an ongoing basis all year. So it starts out pretty sparse, and then it gets more and more full as the year goes on. So those are kind of some of the big key documents that help provide clarity in terms of the board superintendent team. And so, I think what, you know, I think where the opportunity for discussion is, are the processes and structures and things that we have in place, are those meeting of board's interests? And are there, you know, are there any changes to kind of our existing process that the board would like to talk about or consider as we move forward into this next, you know, season of updating all of this for the 2024 base layer?
So I know those first few topics weren't the most exciting, and thank you for everyone who's here and those who are listening in, but we felt it was, we felt it was a good idea to kind of just run through those at a high level as a collectively, as a new board, see some of those policies together. Obviously, we're in the middle of a couple of these things, so getting the knowledge out to new board members, too, that, you know, the strategic plan and goals and those things will be coming up here soon, and getting them kind of familiar with what they look like. And so, appreciate everyone kind of sticking through that first little part with us, so. Anybody have any questions or concerns with A or B so far?
Nope.
No, can I just make a comment? I really appreciate, only being four weeks into this, how thorough Tracy is. You seem to understand exactly what my questions are going to be and anticipate that and explain it all very well. So it's, it's made it so that at this, up till this point, I've had very few questions, because you've done a good job of already filling me in, so thank you.
Great. Well, I know there should be some...
Just...
Go ahead.
Really, really quick. Brittany, when you talk, if you could talk into the mic, I guess, a little better, I can hardly hear you.
You got it.
Come on, Brittany.
I've never been accused of...
Sorry, thanks.
I've never been accused of being softly spoken.
All right, so we'll move ahead to C, board processes, priorities, and planning. I know there should be some more discussion around this, around our meetings and those processes and agendas and communication and all that, so should be a little more action here.
So there's really not too many documents to bring up here. Essentially, I think the board knows at this point what your meeting processes are, what a typical board meeting looks like, you know, how the agendas get developed, I think, but there might be some questions about that. So I think, you know, as I've, as I listen to the board, what I hear the board express interest in is ensuring that board meetings are efficient, that they're orderly, that there's equal opportunity for all board members to speak, and that the agendas that are developed reflect the collective board priorities and people understand, right, how to get things onto the agenda and so forth. So I think, you know, the question is, are there other interests that the board has in terms of meeting processes and procedures, and maybe talk about what you think so far is working well? Or, you know, are there, are there any things that need improvement, or do you have any changes to how we're currently doing things that you want to talk about and consider? Because the board meetings are really, it's the board's meeting, so it's up to you to decide how you want those meetings to look and whether or not you want to, you know, put any kind of changes into place. Obviously, there are policy and legal things regarding public comment being part of the meeting, regarding following Robert's Rules of Order, some of those things, but, you know, how presentations look, or those kind of things are up for discussion.
I know from talking to Josh, Josh has a little bit of, some comments on this in regards to public comment, right, Josh? I just know that, I just want to make sure you got, you got what you wanted to say, and...
Yeah. Well, first of all, I had a couple of things on here. One is, I don't know if it's a policy, but I think that maybe it would be helpful if we, for anyone presenting, we have kind of an outline of how we'd like to present. One of the big things I think that's important, I know I've mentioned before, but anytime acronym or initials are used, the person presenting, the first time they present should always expla, should use the full name, so, so if someone who's not familiar with all of those acronyms, they can still follow the discussion. So I guess I'll start there. That's the first thing. I'd like to see any, us develop just basically an outline of what we're looking for when people present, and some key things like that, express that everybody's on the same page when they come to present to us.
You guys not getting cheat sheet up all afternoon?
I do, but it's like five pages double-sided. There's a lot. Single-spaced. There's a lot. And the people, the members of the community that are tuning in don't have the cheat sheet. And so, I do like Josh's suggestion that that first time that we use any acronym, that we define what it is, and then from there on out, we can... I was at a WASA meeting last week, and I was 75% of the way through the meeting before I remembered what WASA stood for. What is WASA? I finally had been remembered. Okay, yeah, it's the superintendent... Turn my mic up. Washington Association of School Administrators. I was close.
You're getting there.
Getting there. I have a couple of ideas on the presentation. It is a little out of the box, and so I'm hoping that it at least is a place to get a discussion started. It might not be where we end up, although I would love for it to be where we end up. But the board packets are large, which is great. I feel very strongly that it's my responsibility as a board member to be very... I feel very strongly that it's my responsibility as a board member to be very well-versed on the board packets. And so, I, it took me the better part of three days last board meeting to get through all of the material, and that is fine. I'm happy to do that. However, I'm wondering, and then we got to the board meeting, and the staff will remember, I'm sure, that our board meeting was quite long last time. Dr. Miller and I had a lot of questions. We're only going to get better. We will learn more and have fewer questions, I'm sure, as time goes on. However, I do also think that an important role of a school director is to ask questions and to have those discussions. And I think that we have, because of OPMI, we as a board have very little opportunity to actually discuss. We have to be together in this room, talking as a group. We have to have posted an agenda ahead of time. And so, we're very limited on how, on the opportunities we have to be able to discuss. And I think that there is a lot of synergy and collaboration when you get five, six minds together talking and working on one particular issue. So, I don't want to limit the opportunity we have to be able to discuss, but I do want to be respectful and not make every board meeting four-plus hours long. And so, I recognize that what I'm suggesting, it will be a little bit onerous for some of the staff, but I'm wondering, and I don't even know if it's legal as far as OPMI goes, but I think there might be ways to work with it. But, I'm wondering if there's any possibility, especially because I've heard that we need to be moving to where we have auditory recordings of our meetings. Is that correct? That there's something coming soon?
Yes, and we do.
Since we have the, so that qualifies. So, what, one of the ways I consume information currently is listening to it, is I'm driving around in my car. I spend a lot of time bussing my children everywhere, and I have a lot of time to listen to things. I don't have as much time to sit and read. And so, I'm wondering if it's possible for those presentations to be either audio-recorded or video-recorded ahead of time? And then, they can be delivered to us with the board packet, and then we can listen or watch those videos. It might be on one-and-a-half speed to get through it. But then, we can come as board members already ready. I understand that we get the board packet and that we are supposed to review it. But, when the staff comes and gives a presentation, they add additional information that we don't get from the slide deck, and I don't want to miss that. That's really the important information that we need. And so, I'm just throwing it out there as an idea, that perhaps there's a way to get us the full presentation from the staff ahead of the, the board meetings, so that we can come, and then we can give a two-minute synopsis of the presentation, and then we can just launch right into the discussion.
So, I appreciate that. My thoughts is, number one is, is the, the extra step that makes the staff do, puts the staff into this position where now they've got to record the video and upload it, or whatever. I mean, yeah, in theory, I think what Brittany, one of the things she's getting at is, correct me if I'm wrong, is, is just kind of shortening the, the presentation portion and allowing the, if there's a lot of questions, allowing that to, to balance out a bit. So, it's not like a really long presentation, a bunch of questions, now we're in for our meeting, where if we can cut one of those down, then if the questions do run long, then...
It is, but I also don't want to lose, I don't think cutting the presentation is entirely the answer because I still want all that information. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
Well, and I think, I think personally, that's why, if we can provide them a very clear outline of what we're looking for when they present to us, that will help them to get us the information we need. But, I actually, maybe I'm somewhere in the middle. I don't think, I don't know if we need a, a video presentation of their presentation prior, but to me, if I've reviewed all of the slides, I've gone through the packet like I'm supposed to, then I don't need them to come up and read those slides to me a second time. I think that it, really, to me, the slides should take three minutes, and then our discussion is the majority of the time, because that's the whole reason they're there. They're there for us to ask questions, to dive into whatever we're evaluating. They're there for us to evaluate, and the only way we can do that is by asking questions and collaborating together. That's my opinion.
So, I'm all about shorter meetings. You'll never hear me ask for a longer one. But, there's also a public information component of what we do. So, we have to make sure that whatever we do, we have the information, the information is available to the public, but the part of the open meeting is making sure that the public understands what we're doing. And so, part of what we do, that we, the staff, I believe, has to then go back through and give that verbal presentation again for the public, because ultimately, that's who we're serving. So, again, totally get where you're going with it, because I had the exact same thought, but there is that public service component of what we do.
Totally agree with Mike. That's exactly what I was going to say. I wrote it down right here. Public is, is, being transparent with them, make sure they hear that is really important. And I don't think you're asking for a no presentation. You just want to assure...
No. Yeah, and I was hoping that the public, I mean, I, you know, I was hoping that they, if it was a topic they were interested enough, that they would take the time to watch the presentation. And like I said, I don't know if this really does fly with OPMI.
And the public has access to the packets as well. It's not as though the public doesn't have access to the slides. My whole, my whole issue is that if a presenter just comes up and reads the slides, then there's no reason for us to look at the slides before the meeting. And really, the whole point of us getting the packet before is so that we look at those slides. And so, really, the majority of the presentation should be going over questions that we as a board have, and, and then answering those questions that maybe are in more depth than the slides provide.
Yeah, I think one, one thing, and this might help Brittany, that I've done in the past, is as I read through the packet, if questions come up, I'll, I'll like reach out and ask those questions and try to get an answer. So, I know when I, you know, I get to answer those questions, and then from there, you'll have the questions that pop up from the presentation. So, hopefully, you have, you know, a majority of your questions answered, but then there might be something that pops up through the presentation that, that you want to ask a question on. Because ultimately, the questions and the discussion is to help us make an informed decision, so I don't know if that would...
Yeah, pre-questions are good. Now, Brittany's going to say, but how do I, but sometimes I get a question when I listen to the presentation, you're going to say that, huh?
No, I wasn't. Actually, what I was going to say was that when I was a community member, sitting, watching the board meetings, something that I didn't like, and the only word I can think of is, it just wasn't very satisfying, was to not understand the thought process of the board members. It seemed like oftentimes, and now I understand that you've been doing your homework, and that you show up at the board meeting having already talked to a few board members, and that you come already kind of understanding the direction you want to go. But, I think that there is some benefit with the partnership we have with the community in shining the light a little bit on what we're thinking, and why we're thinking that way, and why we're making the decision that we're making. And so, that's why I'm trying to figure out how to give the board more time for discussion, much like we're doing right now, so that the public can see how we arrived at the decisions that we've made, rather than just showing up and saying, yep, sounds good, let's move on.
I agree with you. Yeah, part of, that's part of the reason why we have this meeting right here, is, is we added more of these for that exact reason. So, I totally agree with you, and I remember being on that side of it too, like, like kind of wondering the same things.
Yeah, and there, and there might be an opportunity to, during those presentations to, I know as we get going through them, you know, a question comes up, we throw a question out, it kind of stops the presentation, we get through the question, and we restart again. So, there, there might, might be an opportunity to be a little more, maybe disciplined in our approach in terms of when we fire off those questions. So, for example, I think last meeting, I think Alyssa presented, and it was kind of like three different parts. So, it's like, okay, let's get through that first part, what questions, discussions do we have? Okay, let's get through the second part, questions, discussions, rather than kind of just throwing them all out in the middle of it. So, then those presentations then would ultimately, I guess, shorten up to a, to a certain point, and then the rest of it would be our questions, and, and back and forth with the, with the presenter. So, there could be an opportunity there for that.
Or even hold questions to the end. That's one of the things that I would like to see done, is it's, I get, I get the fact we want to ask questions when they're top of mind, but at the same time, we also have pen and paper, we can write them down and ask them at the end. So, it's to keep things moving. I see staff going, yes, please quit interrupting while we talk. Yeah.
I will just add, I knew a couple of questions that were coming. They were emailed to Dr. Pierce.
Alyssa, if you want to talk, you got to come up.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Alyssa, if you want.
I will just add, I knew a couple questions were going to be asked, but they had been forwarded to Dr. Pierce, and she had said, hey, I think these will be asked. So, I really appreciated the time, so I could prepare and give a better thoughtful answer. So, that, from the presenting side, that, that was really helpful when we're talking about this.
Yeah, I guess, actually, guys, one of the things as we're talking here, can we step back for just a quick second? Because I think what would be helpful is first to define, to me, why are we having these presentations? Because to me, the purpose of the presentation is for us to evaluate a specific aspect of one of the, the goals or strategies we had, and that's why they're presented, correct? Am I correct in saying?
I'll, I'll add a comment here. Yes, most of the time. And one thing I'm wondering and kind of reflecting on is, I wonder if we could create a, like a template of some sort that went with the presentation, that was really clear about, what's the purpose of this presentation? Sometimes, sometimes the board has just said, hey, how do, how are, like, you've just asked for information on a particular topic, and, and it's more just an informational, there's not a decision, right, that the board is going to be making that evening, or we're not going to be making a recommendation of any kind. And, and so, as you're asking that, Dr. Miller, I'm thinking, I think sometimes we're not super clear on what's the purpose for this presentation, and what is, what are we asking from the board, if anything, or what is the board wanting from this presentation? And, and that way, it would be, it would be more transparent for everyone, like, what, what is this presentation for? Which might help inform some of the questions that you would ask in advance, like Alyssa said, that are really helpful, I think. Because not always are the presentations about the board taking a particular action on something, or...
Yeah, so, so, like, like starting out, like, the purpose of this presentation is to inform the board of X, Y, and Z, or the purpose of this is to share with the board the student survey results, or something. Because, again, to your point earlier, the, the purpose of the meeting's for the board, but we also have the community, and we want to ensure that they know kind of the, the background on, on this, because they're not going through the 300 pages of board packet, or 99% of the community's not.
And I mean, there's definitely times, and this was an identified board priority either last year or the, the previous year, where, you know, the board is asked to make pretty weighty decisions about a boundary, or a budget, or, you know, and that those kinds of decision-making processes require, you know, multiple presentations, and lots of time, and lots of transparency for the board to talk about their thought process behind the decision that they're going to make. And so, it's like not all presentations are created equal, right? Or are for the same purpose, or carry the same weight.
It's almost like before, it's like, yeah, you know, like Tri-Tech, for example. We tried, Tri-Tech did last time. That was great. You know, that could probably be a relatively shorter one. It's, it's more just like, we're awesome, yes, you are, you know, it's just kind of like an update kind of thing, and it was wonderful. But, there's other ones where like, yeah, maybe we hear ahead of time, we're like, hey, you know, let's dig into this one a little bit more. Like Tracy, we wouldn't mind if this, we could respond to you. We're okay if this one takes a longer, if they present a little more information, if they spend a little more time. You know, because I do agree, they're, they're not all equal. Some of them you really want to dig into, and some of them are just kind of, just kind of happy. But, our job is really to question and to look, right?
So, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead. We're not done yet. I just, I'll wait. I'll wait and see how it wraps, how, what the direction this goes. My fear is that we're going to have this great discussion, and that we're just going to end up saying, make the presentation shorter. And I don't know that that's necessarily what we're looking for, because I don't want to cut out the information. I get really good information from the staff when we present, especially being a new board member. I didn't know anything about Tri-Tech. I wanted everything. You know, I know that was more or less a feel-good quote-unquote presentation, but I loved that presentation. I don't know anything, and I don't want to cut that out, so...
So, let's, so let's look at the next agenda. As a perfect example, we have, we have two updates, which I would consider updates. We've got Delta High School Nutrition Services. So, those, to me, would be informational updates. The next one is staff safety.
Really quick, Mike, Mike, can you just speak a little bit closer to your mic?
Really? Can't hear me? There are people in Nebraska that can hear me. Sorry. So, again, so next, the next meeting, we've got Delta High School and Nutrition Services, which to me are informational updates. So, those are just going to say, hey, look, this is what's going on, here's where we are, on we go. Now, the next two are pretty weighty. We have staff safety, boundary updates. So, those two are now, we're looking for specific information for those. So, how would you classify those, Tracy? What would you, how would you differentiate the two, between those two types of informational?
So, I think the terminology that you used, informational update, I think, is what you said. Yeah, like annual informational updates, just kind of, here's the update on Delta. And honestly, it's not like there's big changes typically every year with Tri-Tech or Delta, but it's an annual opportunity for the principal or that, or the skill center director to say, you know, here's, here's the annual update. So, it's, I can see if you're new, it doesn't feel that way, right? But, it seems more routine for board members who've seen it every year for a few years. The boundary update, I think, is more of a, it's not a decision, so none of these require any board decisions, Delta Nutrition or Boundary Update. Boundary Update is just making sure that the board knows what the next steps. Board already made the boundary decision, it's being implemented next year. We just want to be sure that you're aware of the communication next steps, that, you know, next steps in implementing that, so as community members are contacting board members about things that you're well-informed. So, again, it's informational, but no decision really being made about the, the boundary. The IMC recommendation is a decision, and that's a more of a weighty one, and it's one that, you know, board members have asked questions about, the social-emotional learning curriculum. So, that will, that's more of a, a lot of conversation probably I'm anticipating, and many questions, and maybe one of those presentations where the board, you know, take, it's a two-parter, right? Like, and that's something that we started to implement and be clear about a couple of years ago, is that maybe at one meeting, there's the presentation and information, a potential then for board follow-up after the meeting, more, and then kind of presentation part two, also time for the board to hear from any community members on a particular topic that might be of interest before an actual decision is being made. So, you wouldn't be asked that evening, you know, here's the, here's the recommendation, make a decision. You'd have more time. So, the IMC one, I think, is a little more weighty. The staff safety is a goal report that's tied to one of our strategic objectives around number of injury claims and that kind of thing. So, it's an annual update, it's kind of a more routine, here's, here's our, here's our, you know, goal, here's our data for this past year. And it's one that the board has seen many, many times over the past several years. So, that's why I differentiate between those. So, like, I would think that the Delta High School Nutrition Services Boundary Update and Staff Safety would be pretty quick and routine, although I'm not, and, you know, maybe not for new board members, though, right? But, definitely for everyone, the IMC recommendation is probably going to be a bigger, weightier topic.
For sure. I want to tell Brittany, Josh, I told Brittany this earlier, since we chatted a little bit about it, is, is, you know, I remember when I first heard the presentation on Tri-Tech, and I had a ton of questions too, because I was like, oh, this, it was new, and I didn't know about it, and, but the second go-around, the third time around, or after I visited, I've been to that school, I don't know, 10, 15 times, or whatever, and so now, it's, I don't have all those questions I had. So, so, some of those are just by nature, being here, you're, you're not going to have the same amount of questions as, as time goes on, but...
Well, and even breaking them down, like you did just now, into informational report presentations, and then, you know, sectioning off the instruction...
Adding categories to them.
Right, and then, I actually really like the feel of those presentations, where giving the presentation, giving us time as board members to say, that's something I'd like to investigate more, I'm going to take the next two weeks to go and meet with these key individuals that have something to do with this particular topic, and then come back for the next board meeting, have the discussion as a board, and then make a decision. I know that's a slower process, but...
No, it's good.
I like the way that feels. It feels more thorough and responsible to me.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
I think what you're talking, like, that process, we're going back, and then... I, I think what you're talking, like that process, going back and then bringing it back two weeks later, I, I think that process would work. I, I think there's a lot of things we do, though, that we don't need to, wouldn't need to do that necessarily, right? If we're making, if we're approving policy, some policies and stuff, I mean, I, I think we can make those decisions after some discussion with, with the policy being shared. But some of these, the, the weightier ones, I mean, I, I wouldn't be opposed to it. I think, I think at that time, we'd probably just need to have that discussion and say, hey, I, I've got the information. Can we bring it back and, and finish, finish the discussion? Because I think that's, that might be fewer times than, than us being able to make decisions and move forward.
Classifying is a great idea. If we could find a way to classify them, I think that's a great idea.
A goal report.
Yeah.
An informational report. I don't know what the other ones are.
And I think it's actually helpful to have a calendar sitting here in front of you too, right?
I think there's more than just informational. I, I like Tracy's idea, especially if each presentation, and then we can classify the presentations, they can provide a few bullet points of the key things in their, their presentation. And really, so like informational, informational presentation should take no more than five minutes because all of the slides we can review and the public can review those slides as well. The packets are available to them. But we can get through those very quickly. And then there, I mean, there's informational, but then there's also strategic goal reviews. So when they're talking about a, if there is specific, one of the goals or strategies that we're trying to, we as a board are looking at, reviewing, like last week, we had a couple of those. Then, again, there's specific things they're going to have in that outline so that, that the meeting can, and, and again, I think to the point made before, we email questions that we have beforehand, so that they're already ready to answer those questions. I think it just streamlines our meeting enormously because we're not just sitting reviewing slides that we already have seen. And, and we're specifically using the meeting and us together to do what us together can only do when we're together. Things we can do on our own, we should be doing on our own.
So through the discussion, I, I've, I've kind of gathered a couple of things. One, classifying the, the topic, so informational, a goal. I don't think weighty is the right word, but if, if there is one, great. If, if not, if not, then if, you know, if the topic doesn't have a classification, then, then that should tell us it's, it's going to be a discussion and, and worth our, worth the time. There's also the discussion, we, we talked about holding questions till the end. So I, I do think if we, if we do that, if you have questions before, before time, I think if we get those sent in, so the presenter can answer those questions through their presentation, then at the end, whatever questions we have that aren't answered, we ask then, I think that'll help. That'll help get through the presentation, and then that'll open it up for, I guess, a longer period of, of time. Is, is one as well. Am I, is there? Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
Good for me.
Yeah. No, 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 only, my only hesitation, and I can work through it, is just, I want the public to see. So if we have questions that we ask, I understand the concept of do the work that you need to do individually and save the time for the things that we need to discuss together. I do think just for that relationship with the community, there's a lot of benefit in them knowing. And so I don't know if, if we even say, just before the presentation starts, I sent in a few questions. These were my questions. I don't know. Maybe it's not important, and I'm too worried about it, but.
I, I do think it's important, and it makes me think, so typically, we, you get a board packet on Friday with the presentation. And then once you've looked at that, you might have questions before the board meeting. So I think that gives us the opportunity to actually add a slide saying, you know, board questions, and here, here are the answers to them versus like redoing the presentation to address the questions, because that it's really transparent, that the board had these specific questions. And now we're bringing that additional information to the board meeting presentation. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It's just really clear to everybody that that's what's happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
That's great.
Yeah, I like that point too, because I know oftentimes we go through some presentations and there might not be but one question. But that's because a board member's already reached out to someone and discussed and had three or four questions answered. So they, they kind of already had that processed. So I think that'd be a good, good piece. So, so it sounds like we have kind of three things to move forward with the meetings on. Dr. Miller?
Yep. I like that. I think, and, and maybe I'll, I'll spend a little time and, and try to put it, put together an outline like Tracy was saying, and C, and I'll pass it to you, Gabe and Tracy. Again, I think the easier it is and the faster, I'm, to Mike's point, I think, that he said at the beginning, the faster we can get through a meeting, the better. If it's efficient, I like that. And, and, and like I said, the things I can do on my time, and I can do alone, we don't need to have the all together to do that. Let's just do the things we can't do, we can't do, we have to do together, together. Everything else can be on our own.
Sounds good.
Great.
All right.
You know, my suggestion.
Yeah, I was, thanks for everybody's patience with me being on a phone call. I know this is annoying, and I apologize.
No problem.
I was just going to suggest that we talk about committees next, and then, and then communication protocols, because I think there's some connection maybe between what the board was just talking about, and this potential for board committees.
Okay.
So there's current board policy 1130, very short. But it speaks to that committees of the board may be created by a majority of the board. The president may appoint board members to serve on such committees, the purpose in terms of which shall be determined by a majority of the board. And these board committees are limited to two members, because two members can meet and, meet with me or meet with me and, and members of my team, and it doesn't violate the Open Public Meetings Act. So some boards have, for example, budget, board budget committees. And I want to make sure we're being clear, this isn't like a big community committee where the board is part of that committee. Or it's not about the board joining the instructional materials committee. These are committees of the board. So this would be the potential for the board to say, you know, these two board members are going to be on the board's budget committee. And these two board members are going to meet periodically with Vic and Tracy during budget development season. And so they can ask lots of questions, kind of on behalf of the board, help inform what you want to make sure are in those presentations. And, and it's like we're working with a small subgroup of the board. Doesn't take the place of any of the public, you know, presentations or whole board decisions. But it does create a, a situation where there's certain board members getting like maybe a little, like really deep, digging deep into a particular topic. And thinking back to that first policy we looked at with those big areas like policy development, fiscal accountability, you know? It would be those kinds of committees. Or if, if the board wanted to have a committee on instructional materials, again, it's not the board joining the IMC, Instructional Materials Committee. It would be a, a committee of the board focused on curriculum or something, right? And so the board has, in policy, authority to do that. Since I've been here, to my knowledge, that's not been a, something that the board has done. I don't personally have any experience, like in my prior district, the board did not have a committee structure. But I know it's been brought up in, in the past, and it's something that the board can talk about and decide if you want to do it.
I think it's a great idea. I know that Gabe and I met a bunch. I used to sit down with Ron every four, five, six months, something like that. I know that we've talked. So it's kind of, I think it's like informally happening a little bit, but having a structure to it. And I think it makes a lot of sense. And then, because if you have a structure, you have sort of a focus and you're on topic, hopefully, and I like it.
But I guess, I guess what's the purpose? Because if that's, if that's happening, then you two come away very well versed in the budget, and the rest of us are behind the curve. So how does that information then get parsed to the rest of the board?
Yeah, it's a good question. I don't know.
So that's the only downside, is having, you know, where we can't meet. You know, it's great if someone has a hot button topic, they want to go research, that's wonderful. But again, the other people are then outside looking in.
Well, I still, I think, I still think that the, the, the other board members, the other three, I guess, in this case, would still have the same information they would have had. They don't have, they don't have less information because of this. It's just that other board members have more information because of it. So I don't think that the other board members are losing anything. And then it just provides a little more context to, now we're in a, in a discussion with all five of us, and then, you know, there's just more people well-versed on the, on the topic. I don't know.
But I, I think maybe some, I, I mean, I think anyone can be involved in as deep as I guess they want to go, right? If someone really wants to be super involved in the budget and learn and do all that stuff, I, I don't think there's anything that's stopped us in the past of getting together with, with Vic and Dr. Pierce and being involved. Kind of to Mike's point, yeah, I don't know. Again, you might have two of us who have the ability to make all these meetings and do all these things, and the, you know, how do you, how do you get back that information to the, to the rest of the board? It would have to be kind of like you would be on the committee to help kind of push the board's guidance in, in certain areas. But yeah, I don't, I don't know how you get that information back without just doing it in
In a meeting.
In a meeting.
Well, my question is, like, this might help, ever, like, what, like, what are the main committees that might be formed? What, what, what would they be?
That's really up to.
I mean, a budget seems like, seems like an obvious one, but beyond that.
I know I keep going back to the relationship with the public, but that's apparently what matters to me. But I think that that, one of the things that I wanted to talk about tonight, and I thought that this discussion point was this, but I, I didn't realize this was a, specifically a board committee. But I wanted to talk tonight, and we can table this if it's not the right time to talk about it. But I'm, after meeting with Vic and Tracy a couple of times, and all of my attendance at the school board meetings last year, I'm aware that we need to start doing some work very early on, as far as the community is concerned with the levy that we have, not coming up until 2026, but I don't think it's too early to start letting the community understand the position we're in and how important it's going to be to pass that next levy. And so I wanted to talk, when I saw committees on the agenda, about when is it, when, when is the appropriate time to form a levy committee and to start that up and running? So if that's not strictly a board committee, I think that there might be room, if we wanted to move forward with a board committee. We could have a board committee that's specifically focused on community relations. I know that as community members, that's really who we are, right? We're here to represent the community. But that's very different than actually being out in the community and talking with people and being a representative of the school district to the community. It's easy to be the community representative to the school district, but we also have that other role of being out in the community and explaining to the community what's going on with the school district, because they, that was our, that's our job. They trust us, and that we're supposed to be talking to them about what the school district is up to. I'm not necessarily proposing that we go that way, but that is another, in addition to a budget committee, that is another committee we could form if we wanted to.
We already have a. Go ahead, Josh.
Okay, sorry. I, it's hard to tell when, so I, I like, Brittany, I think, to her point, I think, actually is making a great point, and that is, is that we may not need a, a range of committees that are always present. So we don't always need a budget committee. We don't always need a curriculum committee. But I think what might be advantageous is, on occasion, there may be specific things that individuals within the, on the board may have specific interest in. For example, someone may be passionate about school safety. And, and that's something they want to figure out more on, and we, as a, as a board, can say, okay, let's create a school safety committee, and they're going to do a deep dive into safety. And, and into school safety, and then they may come back to the board with certain recommendations or, or say more of a, hey, here's what we found as a committee, and here's some things that we, we would recommend. And so we, as a board, as we go through, you know, another area might be school counselors. Are we, how are we using our school counselors? It's something personally that I, I'm interested in. And so we may form a committee that says, hey, let's form a committee that's going to do a deep dive on this. And we will select one or two board members to be part of that committee. To me, that's, that's the way these committees would make the most sense, rather than having standing committees that just are another meeting.
And just to think, a little bit of a nuance, just to, to, to be clear about, so we have multi, we have staff committees. There's a, there is a district safety team. There is a, a counseling committee. And so we have these committees, and this is kind of thinking about that difference between board's role, superintendent's role, right? This structure allows for there to be board committees. So if the board wanted to say, we're going to form a board committee on safety, the, you would say, okay, I'm just making this up, like, Mike and, and Brittany, you're going to be our two-member board safety committee. And you're going to work with Tracy and, and meet with Tracy and whoever else she decides on her team to get really smart, like you're saying, Dr. Miller, about safety and how it all looks. And, and, you know, there could be like reports back to the full board, just like I send you information on an ongoing basis about all kinds of things, you know, about what this committee, meaning the two board members and me and whoever else, discussed. And, you know, if there's particular ideas or whatever, then that might get brought to the full board if it needed board action. I just want to make sure we're not, these aren't like big staff committees, right?
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I like the idea. I think to Mike's question, I kind of digested his, your question a little bit. You know, if, if two board members know, know more than the other one, I, I kind of think that, that's kind of organically happening anyway, you know what I mean? So I think it just formalizes it, and, and it allows those two board members to have a lot of clarity. Yeah, then, then maybe they can have, or however we decide to present that to what we found. I mean, it just provides a little bit of a structure to it. And I, I do like, I don't know that the committees have to be like longstanding, like we have to have five committees always full all the time, but they can be, I think, there's nothing wrong with them popping up and kind of going away as topics arise or something like that. Doesn't necessarily have to be, we have these five committees that have to be full, full all the time. I don't think we need that.
Yeah, like, for example, you mentioned bond and levy. So if, if the board wanted to think about this, now, this wouldn't be, obviously, there's the citizens' bond and levy committee, which is a separate thing altogether, right? But the, at some point in time here, the board's going to have to decide what the scope of the next levy is going to be, and what the amount and rates and all of those kinds of things. And we have had those discussions in study sessions or retreats, right? And we've talked, talked about, you know, what should be included in that. And, and so if there was like a committee, then it would be, it would look like those two board members would meet, like I said, with Vic and me kind of in between those times, dig real deep. And, and then the board would know there were two board members helping to inform the plans or whatever that Vic and I were bringing to you. It wouldn't just be like Vic and, and me bringing you those plans. There'd be some board voice on that before it came to the full board for conversation and decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I honestly, I just want to be clear, I'm not really advocating one way or the other. Like I said, I don't have personal experience with like a board committee structure. But some of the questions that have come up over the past years have been about like board committees and this kind of thing. So figured it would just be a good time for the board to talk about it.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm not opposed to board members having a committee and doing some of that necessarily. I think, I don't think we need standing committees personally, but, you know, if a board member said, hey, I'm, to your point, like, the, the bonds and levies, like, I'm super interested in this and want to dig, dig into it and be around more. And you want to create a committee, and another board member wants to join you, like, I mean, I think that could be fine. I also don't want to, I want to be very clear too, I wouldn't, if it's the same two board members doing all the different committees, maybe because they have more, more time in their schedule, I think that's fine too. It's almost like I wouldn't, I wouldn't want anyone to think the other board members aren't doing their due diligence behind the scene, because we all have different things going on and the ability to make meetings and stuff, and so.
And just to, again, though, just highlight that it, it is kind of a formalized process. Like, if, if the board decided you wanted to even have a short-term committee for budget or whatever.
Right.
You, the board would have to vote on that, right? And then you'd appoint who the two members were.
Yeah, we, yeah, we'd have to put it on the agenda. Yeah, we, yeah, we'd have to put it on the agenda and go through that process, yeah.
Okay, so real quick, now that you brought that up, is there anything prohibiting a board member who has an interest in a particular topic recruiting another board member to say, hey, come learn about this with me? And so that you can bring strength to the board, if that's something, I mean, with, does that have to be formalized? Or can you just say, I'm really interested in? I shouldn't have asked the question.
No, I, I think, sorry. We prob, we probably, we, if, if that's the case, we probably should.
Formalize it and make a committee.
So the public knows.
Okay.
Um, I mean, that would be my suggestion. I just think that, that just keeps it transparent for everyone so they know who's, who's doing what. Um, but there's nothing to say that as a board member, if, if you want to be in all these meetings and learn more, I mean, you can request it, to do that individually. I think it's when we get the second one in, we, we want to go there out, but. We can. We can kind of think, I mean, think through it, I guess, some more, and if you have more questions, we can, we can, um, work through those down the, down the road, but.
I think none of us, not, if none of us is saying, I think we should do it, and these are the specific committees that we should form, I think that makes it pretty clear that we don't need to do it, or that this isn't the right time to move forward with it.
At least right now.
Yeah.
Something may come up and all of a sudden, oh my God, we've got to.
Right, we need a committee for this.
Spearhead this and diet in.
Yeah.
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 So the, the ability is there, and we know the process to, to form a committee. Um, so we can, we can do that formally if, if the need arises, um, if we want to do that. So, okay. Did you have, did you have documents for communication calls?
I, I don't. This is just, you know, kind of revisiting how the board responds to emails, um, what those protocols are currently, if they're, you know, working. I mean, I think in terms of interests, board members might have other things going, you know, being responsive to people who send the board emails, kind of speaking with one voice.
Public comments.
Clear about like board superintendent roles. So, and I think, you know, I think, um, it's been working really well from my perspective in terms of when there's a, a concern that a, a staff member or a parent or a community member raises. And, um, it's, you know, my job to work that through, that, um, the board presidents, current and past, have been really good about giving that to me to take care of versus trying to take care of it themselves. So like, I think things are working well, but the board might want to talk about how, if it's working for you.
Yeah, so in, in the past, um, communication that comes in to, to the all-school board email, the board president's responded back with, with an email to that, to that individual, um, or to Dr. Pierce's point, has asked that it be looked into, and, and she's taken that on and, and responded. So, um, I think that's worked in the past. I, nobody cares to change it. We can continue doing that um, that way.
Yeah, I mean, you've, you've kind of just started taking that over, right?
Just until.
And it's been great. I have no problem with it. I mean, sometimes there's, there's a time when, um, somebody will address the whole board and then, like, one of us might respond to that individually, just, just not reply all, but just reply just to them. Uh, I think that's what we should be doing, obviously, and not replying all. Uh, so, but then sometimes you have, you have community members who put everybody back on, and it's kind of frustrating, but, but just making sure that we reply just to that community member and not to the whole board.
Although, so just so I'm clear, if, if a community member emails the.
The whole board.
KSC board email and says XYZ, uh, sorry, uh, with protocols, but is the board president responds on behalf of the board?
It makes them, and we did that so that they know that we, they were heard and that we were looking into it or whatever.
So individual board members then respond to that. If, they might say something different from what the board president said, and then that's where it can get weird.
Yeah, I think, I think that, I guess the question would be, most, most of the emails that come in, right? And you guys have seen some have come in from some students, X, Y, and Z. We respond back, uh, you know, thank you for email, this, this, and this. Um, I think where the hangup might come is if a, if, if a email comes in that's directly related to one person or one event that someone else has different information about, do you still send back, you know, has the board president still send back a response that says, thank you, we appreciate it, we'll look into it, or, you know, we may not even have any information? Or is that individual board member just correspond with that person? I, I don't know.
I absolutely, I absolutely think that, that, that board member has every right to respond to that. And they should.
Because the, because the tough part is, is most emails come in through the all-board email. They don't come in directly, oftentimes directly.
So maybe the differentiator is, you know, if the email comes into the board and it's a, if, if, if it's an email with a concern about an individual board member, then maybe that individual board member should be the one responding to the person versus the board president.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, because that's the thing. I mean.
Shouldn't, shouldn't it be reply all? Should just be reply?
Yeah, well, because, yeah, I don't know how many emails it takes to start getting into different.
I mean, can you, as the board president, appoint the board member to respond to it? So if it's something that is about any particular board member or about their particular understanding or knowledge, can you, in the email chain, say, thanks so much, we appreciate hearing from you, I'm going to have Brittany respond to you about this? And then, I don't know how that works because then you'd still have Gabe and I on that email thread.
Yeah.
Well, as long as, as long as it's not everyone, I, I think you, I mean, you can go back and forth. So if, if I'm, would be the lucky one to have all the responses as the CC or something, I guess so, so be it. But again, we want, we want to address the community's concerns. I just, I don't know how appropriately to do that if it's individual. Like I said, most of the time it's standard.
Right.
This, that, and the other, but.
I don't know, that seems to make sense to me to have you be the first point of contact, and then you decide if it's a Tracy response, or if it's a Mike response, or if it's a Josh or Mike, I don't know.
Yeah.
I have one week's experience getting emails, so I don't really know how this works, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then, it's my understanding correct, correct, that if, if we are emailed individually by a member of the community, we can respond individually to them, correct?
Correct. I think we should. So, so I just.
And that's just remembering that whatever, if they're saying, I don't like whatever, or whatever.
Right.
Just knowing that your response.
Is just me.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then that's, that's the thing, that maybe you say that every, you have to say that at least the first time, like, hey, by the way, this is just my opinion, this is my response, not, not the board's.
And I think that probably the safest response is right there in what that language is in the code of ethics is like, it, it's more about listening. Thank you for sharing your concerns, you know, understand, making sure you understand what their concern is, and then say, you know, as we discuss this as a board, it's a, thank you, it's important for me to understand, but versus committing to what your opinion is, because if you can pit, commit at that point to, I think this, and then the board decides differently, or you change your mind based on, you know, then it just gets.
Right.
Complicated.
Yeah.
What's the, so the, the response back that includes everyone is not an issue, right? So for instance, we had, you know, six or seven students reach out and say, this is part of my assignment, thank you, all this stuff, right? And so responding back to them, that's not an issue, that's not a.
I respond back to each one of them.
That's not an issue, right? Having all the board on that response email. It's once it moves forward from that.
Yeah, I mean, it, you're only creating a meeting if you're having like a dialogue.
Okay.
Right? Back and forth as a, as a board. I think if, if an email comes into you as a board, and then you re, you respond on behalf of the board to that email, like the ones, the nice ones that the students sent, then you're not, you haven't created a meeting.
Okay.
If then individual people started chiming in, after that, it could potentially be problematic.
Okay.
But.
Okay.
So like those students, I respond to all, every single one of those students, and I think I should. I mean, just let them know that, yeah, we, I heard you. I know Gabe responded as well, but I wanted to let them know that I heard him as well.
So my only wondering about that, right, is if the agreement is that Gabe's going to respond as the board president, and then you respond and you don't, now does that make it look like, you know? I mean, Brittany's following the agreement, but now it looks like Brittany doesn't care as much as Micah does because Brittany didn't respond, but Brittany's actually following the agreement. Do you know what I mean? So I think that's what you might want to just talk about.
Well, and, and I agree with her, because that's one of the things, if we're, if we're going to have the board president respond, they're going to respond for the board. I just, I just think that's really the only cleanest way we can do this. Mike, I totally understand what you're doing, I get it, but again, it's, it's just not, if we're going to go out here and speak with one voice, then the one voice needs to come from the president and not all the individuals, people.
And, and I, I mean, I think you had a good point, if, if that's the way people want to go, right? Like, I'm happy to respond back, and if, if the need arises and it needs to be an individual board member who responds and does that, then just like I send stuff to Dr. Pierce, I can send it directly to that board member, and, um, rather than tag everybody again and have six or eight emails cor- corresponding back, then I'll just be the CC on it as the other individual, I suppose. That way, not everybody's getting stuck with eight emails.
It might also be a good idea just to have a line and you're like your signature that says something along the lines of like, this opinion is mine, not the opinion of the board, or something like that, just in, like in your email signature, that's like there automatically every time, just, if you're an individual responding to something.
Yeah.
Might be a smart idea to have that.
Dr. Miller, you still with us?
I am. I, you know, I, I think, you know, I think that the, I, I've just, we're thinking about to Micah's point, you know, him responding individually, and, and I think Mike has a good point in that if, if Micah responds individually, it can create, um, some, it, it just, to me, it makes it difficult. Sorry, I know, uh, it, it makes it difficult for people to know what is the one, what is the one that's speaking in behalf more or less of the board. And, and I think probably what might work better is if, if we want to personally respond to an email that, that was directed at the full board, I, I email Gabe with my response, and then Gabe can add that into his response. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And that way, individuals can have a, you know, each of us as an individual can, if we want, can have a chance to respond, uh, and, and Gabe can add that, but, but we don't all feel like we have to. And, and the person isn't getting five different emails back from each of the board members. That's all.
Yeah, I, I would say the only caveat to that, or I guess the downside to that, would be everybody checks their emails at different times. I mean, I might be on the email and two or three times a day, and someone may not be on there, you know, but twice a week. So it'd be, I wouldn't want to keep sending multiple emails back just to, to cover them. And again, I think, I think the thing to note is, a lot of the emails that come in will go to Dr. Pierce to look through and figure out and respond back to a parent or community member. Then there's a handful that come in that are responses back saying, thank you, we, you know, we hear your concern. So it, it's kind of fewer and far between that an individual board member would need to, to respond to. So.
That's really important notice, like 99% of the time, it's, it is not even needed. There's just occasional time when they mention you or something, or they're, or they have some information that's wrong, that you know that's wrong, and.
So I, so I think we, you know, if you guys are fine with adding in Brittany's kind of suggestion, I'll, I'll just keep responding back, and if one's more geared towards an individual board member, then we'll take it offline with that board member and that person to, to review. And again, most everything will, will go to, um, to Dr. Pierce. That, that works?
Yeah, it's a compromise.
Okay. Um, let's see, anything else regarding communication? I know, I know there was, um, there's been some questions about, um, you know, pu- public comments come up, and then we, you know, it's, people share their concerns or their, or their recognition or whatever it may be, um, and then we just drop it and, uh, move on, um.
Josh had this. Josh, you had this, uh, question, didn't you, about public comment, responding to public comment?
Yeah, I, you know, I, as I've been to the WASD meetings and, and I, I do think it's beneficial if we give, especially if the comment is directed at, at a single member of the board, um, I do think it's fair that that board member should get to respond to that comment. Personally, I, I think that's, if, if it's a general, if it's a general comment to the general board, then, you know, the president can kind of just say, thank you. And if a board member feels absolutely obliged, he should have an opportunity to respond. But particularly if a comment is made directly to a board member, that board member should be able to respond. That's my opinion.
Yeah, but where does that stop? You know, the downside about that is we're just opening ourselves up for, for a lot of public back and forth. And, and that's exactly why we stopped doing it here not too many years ago, is that we just, the meetings devolved into a monium. It was back and forth, and it was just a complete, you know, like, I can't use my word, the word I want to use. It wasn't good, dumpster fire, we'll go there. So the, the reason is, that, Josh, and I guess here's the deal, the downside about being a public official is people just aren't going to like a lot of the stuff we do. And that's, that's just the downside of the program. And sitting here, we're putting targets on ourselves for everything we say. And sadly, we just got to take it. And if, if we, if we devolve into a back and forth, you know, you think the meetings are long now, you just, you know, bring a pillow. So, uh, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but it just comes with the job.
But I guess there is no back and forth. They get their three minutes, that's it. And then the board member can have one minute to respond, that's it, it's done. And that's the end of the public comment. And so it's, I, I agree with you, it should be a back and forth. But I also don't think that people should be able to say whatever they want, however they want, and there is no response, because that only aggravates that person, because they feel like they're speaking to a wall. And so it, it's, there is a single comment, the person can respond and say, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate what you're saying, but here is my two-second response or 10-second response. And again, I, I think the op, the times that this will fly are fairly limited, but it helps to keep the public acrimony in, in, in check because they will know that the board member gets to respond.
I don't.
That's my, again, that's my opinion.
I don't know if there's any legal, like, I don't know if there's any legalities to any of that, so we, we'd have to look at that piece. I, I would almost just, I mean, we, we do board member reports after public comments. I mean, I, I think if, if there's a, a need, and, and if there's like an absolute need to correct something that was said, I mean, if it's just completely erroneous, maybe that's the opportunity. But for the most part, again, I don't think it's, I don't think it's an issue. I think most of the comments come in, we either, we, we end up thanking people, or we pass them on for further review, and, and we move forward, but, um, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it can, you know, it, it can be problematic too, to respond to some public comments and not others. And I think that the, there's a couple of things, I think, from my perspective. While the board isn't responding in the moment, it doesn't mean that the board isn't going to respond or follow up. Is the board is listening to it at that moment. And then, you know, 99% of the time, right, it's about an issue or something. And what happens is then there's follow-up with, um, i- i- the issue gets like forwarded to the appropriate staff member who then looks into it, and there's follow-up with the person. Or I have the opportunity, like what I've started to do and, and will continue to do is, is part of my, superintendent update, if the subsequent meeting address any issues as appropriate that came up in last meeting's public comment. I'll give you an example. Um, there was a gentleman at the last meeting who shared some of, of his ideas about cell phone policy. And I had shared with the board, we do have cell pho- phone policy, and, but, you know, it wouldn't be appropriate in the moment for, for me to kind of get into a policy discussion or presentation while that person was presenting. I did email with that person, so that person has been responded to. And then at the next meeting, I can just do a brief, you know, this was brought up, and we do have this policy, it's policy number XYZ, so everyone knows. So we can build in some processes to make sure that people know that the public comments aren't just falling on deaf ears. aren't just falling on deaf ears. They're not because, but most of that is being taken care of behind the scenes after the fact that it's raised at public comment, right? It's just that people maybe don't know that. So we can be more explicit about people knowing that. But I really don't think it's a good idea to, to get into the, um, kind of back and forth. And I think particularly when somebody comes and makes a pointed comment, they're really, what, they're, they're wanting to just have their say and maybe have their say in the, in the public venue. Uh, because they could, if they really wanted to have a back and forth with the individual person, they know how to contact the individual person. They maybe even had a meeting with the individual person prior to that. And so there was already this back and forth opportunity. And so responding to the person in the public comment isn't really what that person might be looking for, if, if, if that makes sense. And it can just then create more acrimony in the moment.
I liked what you said about somehow maybe making it more known that we are working on it, we did hear you, we, I think that's really important. I think one of Josh's points was that it is frustrating as a public member to feel like nobody's really responding to you. And maybe for somebody else who maybe knows that, or I don't know, maybe has the same concern or something, they're like, well, the board never responded back to that. But I also understand Mike's point of view, you don't want to have a back and forth. That's definitely true. You do have in the moment, right, yeah, you do have board reports and like Gabe said, maybe if you could slip something there, but you gotta be careful.
I, I like the idea of building in some sort of follow up, maybe at the next, the next meeting to kind of say, okay.
Yeah, that's great.
We had, you know, at the previous meeting, we had these three comments. This is the follow up to that. I'd even potentially ask or even throw out there, maybe we take that a step further and we, whether that's, you know, if, if I share them or if you do. But the emails that, the emails that come in, because people don't see the concerns that way that come in. And, and I know there was another district, um, I think it was Mead. So when they did public comments, one of the board members, I think it was their board president, actually said, okay, they did public comments and then the board president said, okay, we had six emails that came in the last two weeks. These were the few of the topics and just kind of, my thought is it kind of gave the community maybe an idea of some, some other stuff that's coming up and that we're working on and we're addressing. I don't know if it's needed, I don't.
I guess I like it. I think it's needed. And I think, I like, I do, I think that it's better to do it that way than to have it be part of Tracy's board report because then it's listed on the agenda. And so.
Email responses.
Well, email, sure. Just, I think you can put them together responding to public comments or in previous public comments. And so you can bring up, you know, honors mass, I'm trying to think of a few things, cell phone policies. Several months ago, someone came and talked about, um, safety on Chromebooks. And so these are just things that I don't, I, as a board member, I'm not totally sure where we are with those things. And so I think that it would be good to have a regular thing on our agenda that says responding to public comments or previous public comments. So we can update the public on where we are with those things. Because if it's part of, you're doing that in your board report, but if it's part of your board report, it's not on the agenda. We can't look back historically and say, oh, we addressed this on this date. Does that make sense?
Yes, I see what you're saying.
One more job for Tracy.
Well, it's not any different. She's still giving the information, it's just, now it's just an agenda.
I don't know if the public even knows that, but yeah, every, every Friday, Tracy gives us a report and many times there's, there's multiple topics on it. And many times there are things that came up in, in public comments or emails that happened throughout the, the week or whatever, so.
And to add, Dr. Pierce, it's, I mean, there's emails that we, obviously some we can't share based on the nature of the email. You know, student related stuff we, we can't share. But, but again, what, what I saw was basically that that school district said, look, we had, we had four emails, two of them were on the budget, two of them were on this. You know, we've, we've assigned them to the right people or whatever. But again, it just highlights the, the back and forth or at least showing the community.
I totally get like the underlying interest is, you know, being transparent, making sure that we're, the board is showing the responsiveness that's happening, right? It's just not very visible to, to people. So I, I, I'm just, as I'm just thinking, I don't know if I'm making a funny face, but I don't mean to, I'm just thinking about how to best do it. And, and I was thinking about some of those things that come in over email or like specific student related issues that wouldn't be appropriate, right? To share about in a meeting, but there's some that.
But if there's a concern like, like, again, like if someone writes in and they're concerned about the cell phone policy, you know, that's something we could say, okay, we got an email about the cell phone policy and we're working on it, X, Y, and Z. Or we could say, hey, we had, you know, 75 emails about boundary updates. So, you know, thank you, community members who are emailing in or whatever, right? And it, it kind of shows just that collective grief. So again, it's not going into super detail, but acknowledging, yeah, yeah. I don't know, I don't have, I don't have a specific way how to handle all these, so just something to.
And the emails aren't as important to me as the people who come to the meetings and make a statement.
Those we follow up with for sure. I just, again, to your point, to Mike's point, just acknowledging the fact that there are people reaching out and we are doing something and taking, taking action and so. Uh, okay. Dr. Miller?
Yep, I'm good.
He's trying to eat dinner at the same time. Just kidding.
He's got a Hawaiian shaved ice in one hand.
I wish, I wish, I'm sitting in my hotel room right now.
But, but where is your hotel room at? Okay, all right. It snowed here this morning, just so you know, and it's not whatever it is in Hawaii. Any, any further discussion on communication, protocols, agendas, meeting process? Again, I'm sure things are going to come up. Obviously, we can address those as need, but I, I think it's good to kind of talk through some, some of that, so. All right, perfect. So we will move along then to the school safety. And Dr. Pierce will run us through this a little bit.
So there's no formal presentation, as you know, based on the board calendar and, and our goals, we do have different safety focused presentations that happen throughout the year. So the intent tonight wasn't to do any of those presentations, but, but rather just to hear from the board. I know safety continues to be a huge priority for, for all of us. We have new board members. I believe new board members help kind of big picture of what we are doing to address our safety. And so all I did was create, just link to the information that we have on our district website that I think does a good job of highlighting sort of our big strategies around safety and security. And Matt, come on up, he's going to join me at the table, just pull up the chair. Because in K-12, uh, the departments that Matt leads, uh, much of our student safety and security things fall within, in that. So, uh, you know, he'll just be here to, to help act to the conversation as appropriate. But, uh, the, the website talks about how people can report safety concerns anonymously or otherwise. Focusing on our, uh, our strategies connected to physical safety in terms of facility measures. Um, I won't, you know, I, I'm just gonna, I, I don't talk about all of these, but our school resource officers, school safety officers, the security staff, um, and then, you know, all the building level plans that we have, safety drills, also safety policies preventing bullying, harassment, intimidation, um, and then a whole, you know, focus on social emotional safety. So was it, so, you know, rather than do a big presentation, I just thought it would be good to have the board have the opportunity to, sorry, I'm not sure what they're doing to just talk through, you know, overall interests? And are we, you know, meeting those overall interests or are there specific concerns and questions that new board members might have that might inform some of our upcoming presentations or follow up, you know, items on, you know, related to school safety? So pretty wide open, but.
Great, no.
Was it that way?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a great, um, starting point that, that page, it outlines a lot. So for anyone in the community who's listening or not seeing this, we have a, a whole page dedicated to safety and security and different measures and where things are that you can, you can take a look at. But, um, I'll, uh, I'll open up the floor to anyone who's got questions and, or concerns they want to discuss.
I have some.
Go ahead, Brittany.
So I, I didn't know before today that we had that forum right there at the top of our safety and security page where you can go right to safety and security and you can report an issue. I like that, I think that was a smart move on our part to make that predominantly there so that anybody who's aware of a safety concern can go on and anonymously report it just by going to that tab. So I really liked that. Um, underneath the physical, I think it was physical facility, facility, it's not up anymore, but I think it was facility safety measures. The first thing that opens up is that the schools will have a vestibule for the entry. I can't remember the exact wording. Yeah, Tracy's pulling it up right now. So my, my question is, and I know that we have, the board will be regularly updated by the district safety team. And so I, I should have checked the board calendar, but I bet someone can tell me when that's coming. I think we just had it in October, didn't we? So it's not for some time still. So, and this is something that I can do on my own with the district safety team if need be, but I, we have some old schools that our newer schools do a great job of this. They have locked entrances, there's only one open entrance. You enter into the school, you cannot get past that entry vestibule before you've signed in, you've been, you know, signed off and you're let in a key entry. But our older schools, particularly those with more open campuses, do not have that even still. And so I'm wondering what's being done at this time to make sure that our older schools are being retrofitted that way and.
So I think, um, and Vic can also add to the conversation, come up and correct me if I'm, I'm inaccurate on any of this. But, um, so all of our elementary schools have secure vestibules. All of our middle schools have secure vestibules. Our high schools, it gets a little trickier. We recently upgraded South Ridge High School beginning of last year to secure their entrance, uh, vestibules at the front of the school and also to add security cameras at the back entrance. Because of the nature of high school campuses with all of the coming and going all day long, um, it makes it a little more difficult. Whereas typically elementary kids arrive, you know, at a certain time. And, and at middle school too, there's not a lot of coming and going. But, um, in Kennewick High School, it's secure, you enter in to the building, you enter into the, um, right into the office area. So you can't just access right into the school, you go through the office into the school. So the office staff is monitoring, you know, who's, who's coming in. You can't just go right into the school. Kamikin High School, it's a little funkier, right, because of the layout, but you do, um, that front gate is locked and secured, that big giant gate. And you do go into the office and then you're allowed access into the middle part of the, of that open campus. But there's some, um, like access points around the exterior of the campus that we're still trying to kind of figure out how to best secure those given the layout of the campus.
Yeah, and it's actually specifically Kamikin I had in mind asking about that question because I was there this fall for a state send off and I just walked in through the gym door, no one knew I was there, I just walked right in, the door wasn't locked. I walked right through the hallway and into the center courtyard and was standing there with all of our students. And, I mean, that was probably a mistake on my part, I probably should have gone to the office and checked in and gone into the center. But, so, and just given the amount of police activity we have in the area, that's concerning to me that I was able to just walk in easy. Yeah, so.
That's helpful to me, yeah, that's Kamikin High School.
Yeah, and I, and, and I'm not, I'm, I'm working on going and doing visits with the other schools right now. My kids attend Kamikin, so I'm most familiar with that high school. But I'm starting visits, so I will become more familiar with our other campuses. So I, I don't have a good information right now for whether or not that same concern is reflected on other campuses. But it is something that I think that we should be looking at if, if we're not right now.
Yeah, and I think we also have, I mean, with the high schools especially, those, those access points are essentially open at certain times, right? Like before school, I mean, it's the front doors, you're going to be able to get into the, from the back parking lot at South Ridge, you can be able to get into until whatever time they lock and then you have to go around and, and go through the front. So those points are going to be unlocked at some, at some times.
And it might, it might be that, I don't know if a staff member had that door specifically open so that we could get in that way, I don't know. I don't have the answer to that, but.
Yeah.
And was, was that like a during the day kind of activity or?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and that, that's, I, I mean, to add to specifically that point, right? I mean, students can walk out of, I don't even know what they call it anymore, it used to be called jock hall, but they could walk out of the gym with the door open. And, I mean, anyone can walk into that hallway for the, for the most part at any point in time during the day if the door gets flung open by a student, so. But I think Kamikin's probably the more trickier of the, the three schools, especially with the, the open campus. But I share the same concern, I think, as Brittany with, and it's tough because the off-campus issues across the street at the apartments and stuff that, um, you know, how do we respond to that? Um, I know we had a pretty significant issue. We had some kids out, maybe at a soccer game or something, they had something going on outside when, when there was some, a drive-by shooting or something. So, um, I think stuff like, my question would be, when, when those things happen, do we kind of get back together and like review what happened and the, like, like do a self-reflection on it and say, okay, hey, this happened, maybe we didn't, um, we didn't have the right, uh, leadership communication or we didn't have the right location to get kids? Or like, do we do like a self-review of situations that happen like that? So we, we can make sure going forward, we're doing better?
Dump your stuff all over. Yeah, so, so we do. And, and one of the things that we initiated a year ago is our district level safety committee where we bring our facility folks in, um, folks from the K-12 department. It's a really rather large committee. Um, and we, we kind of tackled those types of issues, debriefing. One of the ones we did last year was the lockdown at South Ridge for the SWAT-ing call was kind of just reviewing, did our protocols work and those types of things? Um, and then as well, we've been working to develop our comprehensive emergency management plan to also address both, um, just a regular review of those, of those incidents, but also bringing in KPD or other first responders to say, okay, how did, how did that go? Because there are, we, we sadly can't just predict when these events will happen. And it's those after school, on the weekend, during games, those events are the ones that are the hardest to, to manage. So we always review, did everything go well? Who, you know, do we need to put something into place? For example, and I think that to your point, Brittany, we always have to remain vigilant about the security on our campus because over time, things will slide. Unfortunately, I mean, people do things out of convenience. One of the issues we had at South Ridge was, we had people who were just leaving doors, you know, blocked open to, to easily access in and out. And we have to correct that fairly frequently. And to Kamikin's point, the reason I was wondering about it is, we gave all of the, uh, all of the PE teachers a scan card. Typically, our, our teacher's scan cards are, are disabled during the lockdown. The only ones that really work are the, the admin ones, but we gave them admin because they were saying they needed to be able to bring the kids back in the building, should there be some of those. So they were talking about how the doors were constantly locked. So I think that, again, we do review that, but it's to that point, we, we always will kind of go back. I was at a school just the other day for a learning walk and I noticed one of the doors to the exterior was not locked. And so I talked to the principal about how that needed to be corrected. So, um, absolutely, when we find that those situations are happening, we, we work to correct them or review our protocols.
Anyone, I mean, I have another question, but, uh, the floor's open.
I have another question, but it's not related to physical safety, but I don't want to, if you're, if you're on this topic, I can wait.
No, I know, I mean, it's not physical, well, I guess it's physical safety. I mean, it's, I, I guess my question would be, we, recently, we've had a handful of incidents where we've had students bring weapons to campus. I, I want to say maybe three or four in the last two years, a couple. I I want to say maybe three or four in the last two years, a couple just this year. Obviously, that gets shared with the community very fast, either through Parent Square or Kids Texting Parents or the news media or whatever. What kind of do we have any? What are we doing to try to alleviate that? Do we have any sort of things that we've come up with recently to help alleviate that? I mean, I I highly doubt people want to see metal detectors at every door. But what? I think that's the big thing, if you, in my opinion.
Yeah, you know, the the strategies that we employ really are educating kids and encouraging kids to report and staff to report. And I think on when there's when they, if they see something or hear something on, I think on a good side is that part seems to be working because that's how we find out about these things.
Yeah.
It gets reported. The other thing that we do is we have very solid policy about what happens if you bring a dangerous weapon to school and you're not going to continue to be at school. And in fact, based on state law, if a student brings a firearm to school, there's a a minimum one-year expulsion. And we want to use those tools, you know, and communicate about those things. So there's so it's well-understood that this is like not acceptable. And not only are we going to take our discipline policies to the furthest extent, they're going to be prosecuted through the judicial system as well. What we don't have is metal detectors, right? Or any way of of really detecting, with the exception of our our school principals are very good. I'll give an example. I was at Kamikin one day and I was visiting classrooms with Principal Chell in there. And we're out during passing time and and we're just chit-chatting. And he's like, hmm, that's interesting. Student had an odd-looking bag, right? I mean, it's like they're they're it's on their radar all the time. It was just not a regular backpack. It was something different. Immediately, he got on the radio with the school security and said such and such. You know, there's a student entering this hall. I need you to go check this X, Y, Z. So there's there's visibility and vigilance happening there. But what we don't have is any sort of like technology that's in place right now that would help us detect when there's a gun on campus or a weapon or something. We have looked at those things. There are such kinds of systems out there. They're incredibly expensive. And I think they come with pros and cons. They're not a failsafe. There's no system out there that I've seen that our team has looked at that would guarantee, right, to catch any any weapon that might be coming through. They require staffing. They're not just, you know, it requires somebody to be there by the device that people walk through in case the device pings. The devices can give a lot of false positives. And so it's not just as easy as it might seem to, you know. Plus, it's like putting those kinds of sensors or devices on every sort of entrance and exit. So I'm not saying it's impossible. There are some things out there. And it's that balance between, you know, having our schools be safe and not also just like feel like prisons, right? I mean, just to to put it kind of plainly. So I mean, it those are things that we can continue to look at. It would require capital money, likely through a bond measure or something like that in the future, to be able to fund some sort of big facility enhancement like that. But we're always looking at possible systems. We've also looked at ones that, you know, they're just not at a at a level that we think it would be worth the investment or feasible yet. But through camera systems, like we do have security cameras, right, in place, and we rely heavily on those. And there's some systems that are being sold that say they have some kind of, I won't say it right, like an infrared kind of detection thing, like if somebody had a gun underneath their.
Yeah.
It would show it, you know. So we're always looking for what's possible, what's feasible, what's out there. But we we don't have something like that right now.
Do do we have kids, students, is it very explicit with them about dangerous weapons on campus? Like do, like I'm thinking similar to how we do like safe schools, safe schools for teachers. Like, do we have a specific way to highlight to the students, this is this is our dangerous weapons policy? If you break this policy, you will be expelled for a year. You will be prosecuted to the full, like zero tolerance. You will be prosecuted. And then do they, is there a way for them to acknowledge that? So like right out of the gate, right? So is that something that we do or maybe could could look at doing at the beginning of the year? Like saying, hey?
I I would, I can do some checking with our principals, but it, you know, when I was when I was at Deserel Middle School Assistant Principal, and I've heard since then, so it's more recent than that because that's been a few years now. But at the beginning of every year, there there is there are presentations that the administration or security does to students to let them know about those rules, particularly those student safety rules that can get you expelled or long-term suspended from school. So there is, I mean, I've I've heard, and we were meeting, we're meeting this year with our assistant principals. And I think that was the last, the most recent I heard that that they are continuing to do those types of presentations, you know, at various times in the school year to to let people know so that it is explicit. It's also very explicit within student handbooks to let people know what, you know, what is and isn't allowed. So I think they're always, I think from an early age, the students in our district are are learning that these things are are not acceptable at school. And and again, I, you know, when we've had these situations over the past couple of years that I've been in this role, nobody's brought appeal, saying, you know, hey, I, you know, I didn't know or I didn't, you know, they know. They realize. And and again, thankfully, thankfully, most of the times these have happened here recently has not necessarily been to bring the weapons to school for a reason other than to sell them or to 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 do something like that. So again, it's, you know, we can never predict, but thankfully, that's that's been the situation. And and we will consistently educate the students on on that being a a zero tolerance item.
Well, there's more of the discussion and I guess the next item, right, with the discipline side. But I I'm just curious about like asking the, like what during that time, beginning of school, what are the resource officers doing? I'm sure they're using their time wisely. I'm not suggesting they're not. But I mean, are they by the main entrance? And then maybe the vice principals of the back entrance and, you know, they're kind of welcoming kids in and looking and, hey, hey, Jimmy, hey, you know, maybe, you know, look at backpacks and is that happening?
Yeah, the the high level of visibility with our security staff, starting with our school safety officers at the elementary level. But at at middle school and high school, that's the name of the game, is being out amongst the students, being, you know, watching.
On all the main doors.
You know, yeah, to the, and again, you know, sometimes there's challenges just based on the number of entrances and those types of things. So they rely on video cameras. There's sometimes when they're surveilling, using the video cameras and then radioing. There's a variety of methods that they're using to to monitor those.
Three or four main doors in in the high school. And that's where if somebody's going to have a gun, it's probably in the high school, right? So there's going to be three or four main entrances. And obviously, there's only one security officer. But let's say that security officer rotates those four doors and there's maybe three or four other staff members that that's just kind of their job. Hey, you know, and then they're at those doors as well and they're they're kind of rotating and kind of welcoming kids and getting to, I mean, that's, I'm sure we're probably doing something like that, but.
I think in passing before school, I think we ask teachers to come out and be in the hallway.
I'm talking about in the doorway, like in the doorways.
So if you think, you know, the the role of the administrators, there's a safety component that's a big part of a school administrator's role. So there's all of the school administrators, the assistant principals and principal. There's the security staff and the SRO, who are all working together as a team to do the kinds of things that you're talking about before school starts. And then during the school day, yes, you know, there's different kind of ways of teachers being visible in hallways or different administrators assigned to different hallways. Did you see what's happening during passing time? That's more about managing student kind of behavior. But certainly, I mean, I gave you that example and and that was at the toward the beginning of the day where a student was arriving on campus where school administrator saw something that didn't quite look right.
That's what made me think of it. So like, so like, in that case, he did it, right? So that's great. Now, is that something that's like, this is expected, this is articulated, this has feedback, you know? This is definitely happening. I can assure everybody, there is a somewhat on each entrance of this high school. And these, you know, when people, you know, the the times that people or kids are really coming and going and and they're visually inspecting and verbally communicating and all, that's an active process. It's happening, getting feedback, you know? I guess that's my.
Yeah, I mean, the principals talk frequently about the, you know, supervision schedules that they develop. I do think that there are times when a variety of, you know, that, I mean, there's, there's lots of things pulling at some of these folks' time during the morning as well. And so I think that, you know, that's always kind of the ongoing challenge. But certainly, the expectation that is laid out is that we are, particularly at those times, the coming and going times, lunchtime, before and after school, that there is a a high level of visibility and supervision of those of those areas, just for those exact reasons that you're outlining.
Josh, Dr. Miller?
Yeah, I I have a question that goes back to a comment you made before. So you made, you said a lot of kid, or in the past, and I know you can't speak in the visual circumstances, but in the past, we've had, thankfully, students who have just brought guns, who have no intention for harm. And you said those kids were aware of the the potential punishment. So why, have we asked them, why did they do it? What is what is instigating their behavior to bring the guns despite knowing the potential consequences? Have we asked?
There there's a variety of protocols. One of the protocols that's mandatory for students who engage in that type of activity, which is really very unsafe, is to have them conduct a threat assessment with those students. And there's a threat assessment protocol that we that we utilize with resources through the SD. So there it includes interviews with students and interviews with family members and just determining, again, you know, the 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 cause, the root cause of the behavior, but also just the the level of threat for which that student, we need to kind of be aware of with that student and then trying to get them the supports and things that they need to 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 rectify that. So that that is a a process that happens on every one of these situations and is done. And there are various levels of the threat assessment that are done as well. But I think that it it kind of goes to the challenge a a little bit in that, you know, on on one hand, it can it can seem as though, well, if we can just suspend these students or suspend these students for longer, that that will deter the 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 behavior. And I think what we find is it doesn't, that threat of suspension doesn't necessarily deter the behavior for some students because of the various reasons. It's it I, for lack of a better word, I would say it's it's somewhat worth the risk, depending on what the purpose is of 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 bringing the item to school that they shouldn't bring. And it, there is probably not a thought process that they go through to say, oh, these are the consequences if I do this. So that's that's somewhat the challenge as well. But we do conduct threat assessments on all of the students who've been involved with this kind of activity to kind of determine what we need to do to support them better when they are able to return, to make sure the behavior doesn't get repeated.
I guess with that, are we are we taking that data to look at other students and identify students that might be high-risk for for that same behavior pattern?
I I wouldn't say necessarily formally studying those those threat assessments. But I will say, and and one of the things that our school secure, our school resource officers will tell us is that, you know, they're they're somewhat limited in their ability to to search students or to search students' backpacks. School officials are not necessarily as limited with that. So one of the things that I always suggest when we've had students who maybe have been involved with a, you know, in a fight or an altercation with other students, maybe there's been some threatening comments made or some alleged threats made, is that we develop a safety plan for those students that includes what we're going to do with them when they enter campus. And it is not uncommon to have students who have, again, these are not necessarily students who have brought something, but maybe they maybe they have and now they're back in school, but maybe students who have made threats or who we consider to be potentially, you know, ones that might bring something. And they start their school day off by having either their items searched or even we say you can't bring a backpack to school. Like you're you're not allowed to have one on campus. So there's a variety of things we do through that safety planning process to to, you know, to to alleviate that risk for certain students who we might suspect could could pose that risk. And out of that threat assessment, oftentimes with students, and those are the recommendations that the teams come to is we need to really do this along with counseling, along with mental health, you know, assistance and those types of things. But yes, we develop those plans and we and 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 so there are a lot of students who have some of those freedoms and some of those privileges that are that are revoked for some time so we can make sure they're coming to school safely.
I just have a, just real quick, can we, so I know we're talking about school safety, but it seems like behavior and discipline is kind of mixed into this. So can, if we can just kind of run these together, I think probably is it just the overall general topic. Because I think once we say we're done with school safety, we're going to go right back into this similar discussion. So so we'll we'll also talk, be talking about behavior and some discipline as as well.
Tracy, did you want to tee anything up on that?
Can I just point something out real quick on the website before we move on entirely from it? Under the social emotional safety, under, I think it's supporting social emotional learning, there's a section that talks about school-based programs. Is that underneath that one? Yes. So I, when I came to this section this morning, I saw Character Strong. And then I was curious because I saw Second Step listed because I know we're going to be discussing that at next, the next board meeting. And there isn't any information there or a link even. And it looks like there's a lot of information to be filled out here under each of these things. So I don't, it's just a suggestion. If we're not working on it already, can we start working on getting links in there so that we can get that information? Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, and I know I know there's some stuff on like discipline and and what that looks like. But I know the the school safety and the behavior piece, I know we've been talking about high school this whole time, but I'd be remiss if we didn't say that there's not, you know, fights going on in the middle schools and, you know, there's not students in our in our elementary schools who who are causing behavior issues. And so the topic is to kind of talk through that and figure out where where we're at with that. And I I'll share some examples, a couple examples without trying to share any details. But what what happens when, you know, we have fights in a class and then all of a sudden a teacher gets punched in the face trying to break up a fight and, you know, that's that's happening, you know? We've got kids in elementary schools who struggle with behavior and they're throwing trash cans and they're hitting other students. And what do, you know, how do how do we address these behaviors? Because in my opinion, we can't continue to let the these behaviors impact the the others as well. And I know there's rules and laws and IEPs and 504s and all that stuff. I get that. But it's it's becoming a bigger problem. I'm hearing about more and more every day from teachers, paras, community members than than I've heard ever in the past. So anyways, open it up to that.
I'm I'm also very interested in this just because as I was reviewing these policies, it seemed that there's a lot of information on students. It's very student-centered, which is our purpose and how it should be. But I'd also like in this discussion to make sure that we're talking about the staff and that we're also prioritizing their safety as well in in this whole process.
Yeah, I, on this one, I agree with with what one of the things Brittany said is is both staff, the staffs are entitled to coming to a, come to a safe workplace where they feel safe and they don't feel they're a risk by students or by any other staff, but particularly, they should be safe and you know, our discipline and and safety policies, both of them, should be such that both students and staff can come to work and feel that it's a safe environment, that they're not going to be harassed, they're not going to be physically abused or physically hurt. And and I think on part, part of this involves the safety and on the discipline is is if we can, I I believe that if you provide, particularly as you get to the high school, if you provide better career planning and also provide them with better access to mentoring and direction so that they're more invested in school, some of these problems resolve resolve themselves because then they're less inclined to say, well, who cares? So I think by improving the academics, some of these problems resolve themselves, but they work hand in hand at the same time. they, they work hand in hand at the same time.
Thank you.
You know, I, I agree with everything that's been said. From a policy perspective, we want our policies to support both students and staff, knowing that our fundamental, you know, role as a school system is to educate students. And of course, we want to make sure that all of our staff members are safe at work and protected and there are laws governing how we handle student discipline. So much of what we do is grounded in exactly what the law says that we're required to do. The other thing I would just say is there, there are, there are differences, I think, and we have to be really clear when we're talking about student behavior of students who are identified with a disability related to behavior versus students who are, who do not have a disability, who might have challenges and are behaving in a way that is not consistently what our expectations are. So there's kind of two, two different buttons here, and we do have to think about them differently and deal with them differently. There are students who are, who are making bad choices for a variety of reasons, and they have to be held accountable for those choices. And then there are students who have disabilities that are interfering with their ability to regulate their own behavior. And we have different strategies and policies and procedures for dealing with those students. And so it's just important that we kind of talk about them differently, I think, as we have this conversation. Again, none of that's to say our overarching goal is, is to want to support positive student behavior and safety for all kids and good, solid learning environments for all kids and for our staff. So I don't know where the starting point here is. What I, what we have here are links to what our policies say. And we've recently updated these policies to align with state law. We are doing a lot of training for administrators to ensure that people understand what the policy really means, because it's one thing to have something on, you know, written on paper, it's another thing to make sure that people have a, a good understanding of what it, how to implement, you know, how to interpret that policy and implement it. So I was looking to you to fit, where do you want to start this conversation? Do you want to talk about students with disabilities first or students not with disabilities?
Yeah, I think let's, we can start with students with not, not with disabilities and kind of work through that. And I, I think the reason that I wanted to, to discuss this, behavior and discipline, is I want to understand more about, are we taking the approach that we're not, like, we're not going to put up with this in the classroom, right? You're not going to, you're not going to come in and, again, student, no disability, right? You're not going to come in, you're not going to hit a teacher, and we're not going to just send you down to the admin office for 20 minutes while they say, hey, you know, sit down, Suzie or Jimmy or whoever, and then, oh, by the way, go back to class. Like, we, like, we need to have zero tolerance for some of this stuff, and I just want to make sure that either A, we do, and that we're processing through at a kind of, at a faster pace, right? So students getting, so, so students getting in a fight, and why would, you know, why would one student be suspended for a week and one student be suspended for a day if they're, if they're on equal footing, right? So it seems like maybe there's some, we're just, there's some discipline challenges there. But at the end of the day, I just want to make sure that we're processing through this per our policy. We have zero tolerance for this stuff. Everyone in the school, from teachers, paras, SROs to admin there, fully understand that we support their decisions in disciplining students, and it's a safe place to work. And that's kind of, that's kind of where I am looking at, but yes, go ahead, Mike.
So there's, there's, there's policies and procedures, and then there's like the attitude in which we make those follow those. Like Gabe says, for me, and obviously we're just two, two members of the board, but for me, we need to definitely, I know, I know, I'm perfectly aware that there are steps that have to be taken, whether it's if there's a staff or, or, or a kid, there are steps that have to be taken, but when, I, I just feel like sometimes we are really slow, slow, going through these steps as slowly and as passively as we possibly can, when I, I wish we could be a little bit more aggressively on the front end of the steps aggressively. You know, you might have a staff who's showing up late every day and...
Can I ask something, clarify, are we talking about student discipline now?
It's the same.
Because I think we really need to talk about them separately because they're very different.
Yeah, that's what, that's what, that's, okay, so I know what you're saying, but the policies and procedures are very different. The, the, the group, the, you know, one's on, you know, Matt maybe, one's on Doug, not, you know what I mean? But, but I'm, that's, actually, that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is the attitude that the district has, which I think pertains to both of these equally. And that's what I'm trying to say. I'm, I don't want to, to separate them in one sense. I want to like, as a district, what is our attitude generally speaking towards moving anybody through a process? I think that, I think we need to be on the front foot of that, on the, on the aggressive side. If it's, if it is a student, for example, hits a student, and we hear about this all the time, hitting a teacher or whatever, they're, yeah, they're there for 20 minutes and then they're back in class. I'm like, no, that kid should not be back in class like that. I mean, he just punched a teacher. Like, I'm sorry, like, you should not be in our, in our school. Like, you know, if there's a, you know, you hear about staff who stuff, you know, and then you're just like, man, how's that staff member still around? Like, we, I think we need to be on the front foot and just our attitude, see what I'm saying? Our attitude towards this, I think, needs to be a little bit more on the aggressive side.
I see, I see what you're saying, but I think, I think we do need to delineate the, the staff question, that piece. I see what you're saying, the overall like culture of the, of how discipline moves through, but the staff piece, I think, is, let's, I think, focus on the, the student piece.
The student attitude, I mean.
The student thing, I get what you're saying.
I'll have the same question twice, but either way, it's one answer.
I think at the core of your issue, and, and I would agree with this, and that is, we have a policy, we have a written policy, are we strictly following the policy? Are we doing exactly what our policy says, or do we have administrators that take the policy and then, then don't pursue the policy specifically as it's written? And to me, we need to make sure that our administrators are following exactly what our policy determines. Are we doing that?
I think we are.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have.
I think we are. I think we follow our policies to a T. I'm just saying, can we follow them a little faster?
Well, and I think, I think where some of this, you might be seeing differences, is that if you look at the Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, Level 4 intervention and responses, this is, I don't know what document I'm looking at. It's the Kennewick School Discipline Matrix. Yeah, so the, it says, for example, Level 3, Level 3 responses may result in short-term removal. And so there's a lot of leeway there, which is appropriate a lot of time to give the administrators that leeway to determine what to do with that individual. But sometimes, I think, Micah, what you're saying is that that leeway might be...
We are.
We're being, being too lenient with that and not, okay.
Regardless of who it is, just as a general attitude towards discipline, I feel like it needs to be stricter. I mean, if a kid bullies a kid, like, I'm sorry, if you're a bully, then you're going to get in trouble and that's it. Like, I don't want a bully in our school. Like, that's it, that's all.
So I guess what I'm hearing you say is that, Micah, we perhaps may be, may need to be more specific in our policy so that there is less latitude for, for significant leniency in our, in our, our administration of the policy. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Oh, I don't know. Whatever gets the job done, whether it's the stricter policy, a more direct stricter policy, or just the attitude towards enforcing the policy, whatever gets the job done.
Yeah, hold, hold that thought, Dr. Miller. Do you want to add real?
Well, I, I, I just wanted to say, I think from a, so from a policy perspective, the policy outlines what our philosophy is, right? And, and those, and that we do have high expectations for all students to get personal and academic success. Now, I, I'm just going to ask you to hold with me for a minute here, and I hope you don't mind that I use you as an example.
Go for it.
Okay. So when we were, during the board dinner tonight, you made some comments about like, you know, getting into some trouble with it.
Yes, when I was a kid, I got into a lot of trouble, yes.
Okay, and no details or anything like that, but we do know that we, we're in the business of molding and shaping and raising children in partnership with families. And children do naughty things sometimes, okay? And I'm not, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying punching a teacher in the face is naughty, but there's student behavior that's constantly needing to be managed on the playgrounds, in the classrooms. And, and I believe our school principals do a very good job of that. We have positive behavior intervention systems in place in our schools, PBIS. There's been a lot of work done over the past several years around how do we convey and teach, explicitly teach students the expectations that we have for them and hold them accountable, not simply in a punitive way, but in a way that holds them accountable and helps them learn better behavior. Because if we're just fully punitive, it might not, it, it will address the behavior at hand in the moment, but it won't necessarily teach the student the preferred behavior that we expect from them. There's a lot, and I know you've been out visiting the schools over the, and you've seen the evidence of PBIS and things in place. So I think that we do have high expectations. I don't talk to any principal in our system who, who says like, oh, yeah, we don't really, you know, we don't want kids to behave, or have a lax attitude. I'm not saying that there are incidents that you, you hear about as board members, from staff and, and, and community members and so forth, parents. And a lot of times, every situation is different, and there's multiple sides to it, typically bullying, I mean, there's a very specific definition around bullying, for example, about it's, it's, you know, persistent, over time, all of these things. A lot of times, kids do naughty things back and forth to each other, and it gets reported as like, someone's bullying me, but when an investigation happens, the reality is there's things that Mike did to me and then I did to him, and there's all sorts of nuances in all of this. It's not an easy kind of a thing. And I'm just, again, I'm not saying any of this to say it would be okay for a student to punch a teacher, absolutely not. But when you think about the whole topic of student behavior and discipline, I think that there's a lot of good things in place, and typically what the board will hear about is the outliers. Okay? And I, I would just challenge you to think about the, the, the number of those that you hear. I mean, a lot of times, we will all hear about a very egregious outlier incident that is like beyond the scope of what's acceptable and needs to be dealt with. And, and those things do happen, unfortunately, and we, we deal with them. And there's, they're not just happening, you know, like, our schools are not in chaos right now, or there's, like, you go to our schools, there's order, there's high expectations, there's the processes. So I just, I feel really strongly about that, so we're just being really kind of clear about what we're talking about. When it comes, we have done all this work to try to be, we believe, agree as a district and believe strongly in uniform approaches to these things, right? It can't be that if you go to this school, you do this behavior and, you know, you're suspended for a year, and you go over here and do that same behavior and you're sent back to class after 20 minutes. So that's why we now have the, the continuum, the, the matrix that you have, the discipline matrix, and the continuum of disciplined responses. But what's really difficult in all of this is every situation has these little unique nuances. There's, there can't be just a one-size-fits-all approach. It can't be, if you, if you throw a punch, I'm just making that up, and I'm not talking about on a staff member. If you punch another student, you're automatically suspended for 60 days, okay? That's, that's kind of a no zero tolerance policy, and that's sort of an old, kind of outdated punitive way of looking at things. Now it's looking at, okay, what is that situation? Why did you punch the, the student? Did they punch you back? Like, what was the whole, and now it could be a range of, maybe this warrants this many days or this many days. It's so complex that it's, we, what we do is hire skilled, trained administrators, that we train on these things, that we work with these things, that we have district people here advising always when principals are calling, here's the situation. Because there can't, you can't just write down a if this, then X, because it's just not that simple. And again, I'm not, I'm talking, we're talking about kids right now who don't have disabilities and things like that. I don't know what else, like, I'm not sure, Matt, if you could, if there's anything you want to add, or what else we can, we can do.
Well, and I, yeah, and I, and I think that, I mean, what Dr. Pierce is talking about, just with the complexity, you know, it is very, I mean, I, this week I've been involved with several, I mean, viewing a video where two kids were pushing each other back and forth. Well, is pushing, is that a fight? Is it not a fight? It sure didn't look like a fight. It wasn't, I mean, now, did it warrant a consequence? Absolutely it warranted a consequence, and absolutely we needed to work with those students to not have them engaging in that behavior. But when we get really black and white with it, and I think that, you know, oftentimes, particularly in fighting situations, we have situations where, you know, maybe a student's being aggressive towards another student, or teasing another student, or bothering another student, and that student is kind of put up with it for a while, but, and then they, they, they punch the kid. Well, under a zero tolerance, that student is now just as guilty as, as if they had been the aggressor all along, and so we do need to have some flexibility. And what we should always be saying is there needs to be a consequence. There needs to be, something needs to happen. It should never be, oh, well, that's just how kids are. That, that's not what we want at all. And I think our principals do a very good job with particularly those major incidents of, of misconduct. I think where it gets a little bit more challenging is in the minor incidents of misconduct. So students who, you know, continually come tardy to class, students who are off task, or students who are being, you know, flippant with the teacher, and those types of behaviors that really become very aggravating for the teacher and that tend to escalate within a classroom setting, where then it may be a student says an inappropriate thing to the teacher as the teacher's trying, and those are, are very problematic as well. Because a lot of times, while I would always say it's the student's job to come to class prepared to learn and to follow those directions of the teacher, by the same token, it's our teacher's responsibility to be able to create relationships with students and to develop good engaging lessons and, and to meet the needs of students, and we need to be doing all, both those things kind of equally. Because I, I, you know, one of our, our high school principals said, you know, even, even an 18-year-old, you know, they're still learning, their brains are still forming, they're still developing the ability to understand the world that they're in and the weight of their actions. And so we, we really want to make sure that we are, are addressing those needs with students. So I, I think I would echo, Dr. Miller, what you said in that there's, there's an academic component to this, is what's, what are the students experiencing in school that is, is engaging and, and, and is, is helping them want to engage in that versus engaging in misconduct. But I, I also, I also recognize the huge challenge that this is for our teachers, for our parent educators, constantly, I mean, if, if you hear one thing, I was, I was in a middle school this week and I asked the principals, how's things going? And what I heard was behavior. You know, the day that, you know, hey, we came back on Wednesday and Thursday, it was great. Friday, I don't know what happened, and it was all about behavior. And so we know how it's, it's, it's just, I mean, there's, there's nuances and layers and, and it's become so much more complex than when I was in school or when all of you were in school. And so, you know, but, and, and I think that, that that's the, the purpose behind the policy language is to provide those continuum, the continuum, to provide the, the variety of different ways we can address behavior so that it's not all just addressed through a punitive component, but certainly what we don't want there to be is this idea out there that we, we're not going to exclude kids, or that we, a kid just gets to go back to class after doing something really egregious. That should not be happening, and that's really what's outlined in the policy as well.
Okay, so I feel stronger about my original statement now. So you, you mentioned black and white, right? You can't be, can't also be black and white because you give multiple scenarios and situations. Okay. Okay, that's why my, I framed everything with, what is the attitude in which we approach this? If you have a number line, number one, number two, number three, number four, in between number one, number two, there's all these different other points, yes? And then between number one, number two, there's all these different points, and three and four. So if, if, if something happens, you know, if you, if you say, "I want you to pick a number between one and two," well, there's all these millions of numbers in between one and two, right? Little decimal points. I'm saying, let's be on the edge, let's be towards number two, let's be on the, on the front side of that, let's, so, I just...
But I, I guess, if I can ask a question back, I, my, my, my interactions with our principals is there's not a single principal in our system that doesn't want to run an orderly school.
I agree with that.
There's not a single principal in our system that doesn't want safe classroom environments and hallways, so I would just wonder, as you're talking about that, the, you know, maybe, again, the, the attitude with which we're approaching this, if, if, if there's some evidence that you found that maybe somebody, or that maybe either in our policy or wherever, that it's, that we're not, that we're, they're closer to one than to the two that you're describing, because I, and I don't know, maybe I'm not hearing that correctly.
I think we're closer to the, to the, to the passive side, I feel like. Where if a kid does something, let's get, let's be more aggressive and disciplining that kid, so they don't do it. Like, when we went to school, Matt, like Tracy, when I got in trouble in school, I got, actually got swatted. I mean, like, physically got hit, right? I'm not suggesting we do that, right? I'm not suggesting we do that, but, but I'm saying, yes, times have changed. Now, now we're like so far the other direction, that it's just like, I feel like we're just like, all we do is talk about the emotional side of this kid, like, "No, dude, this kid needs, just needs to get in trouble." Like, this kid needs to go home, and then maybe the parent needs to, needs to have to leave work to go handle this kid, and she's gonna be, and the mom's gonna be like, "This is terrible, I, I can't do this, I can't, I can't be home managing my kid, I need to be at work." Well, yeah, well, we can't be managing your kid either, like, he needs to be better. He or she needs to be better, so, you know, it's like, it's like be a little bit more aggressive on that, where we're putting the pressure on the, on the families of the kids, the, and then the teachers need to know that we have their backs, like, "Yes, I can discipline a kid," and then when it bumps up to the school board, we're gonna say, "Yeah, we're, we're on your side, we're on your side, keep going, keep discipling him." You know, principal, yes, we'll, thank you for being strict with that kid, keep being strict with the kid, because eventually, the cleanest cities in the world, Singapore, Denmark, you know, Copenhagen, Denmark, these things, they have very, very, very strict rules, and you don't, you don't mess up with those rules, or you get big time punished. That's why they have no crime, and they're clean, right? And every time you, the further you get away from that, then you've got needles on the street, and you know, so it's like, you see what I'm saying? Like, there's, there's extremes, and I just want to be a little bit more aggressive with the following through, getting kids in trouble, putting pressure on the families to, to talk to your kids, or whatever. I don't know what the answer is, but just to be, the attitude towards discipline, I think needs to be a little more.
I think that might, it... So if there's a third piece to part of this, it's, it's the parents, right? And so if we, are we, I mean, we may need to, there may need to be some pressure on, on the parents to say, "Look, you, like, I don't know when we, they get involved, right? I don't know if little Timmy or Suzie goes to the office, and the prin, the principal takes care of it, sends him back to class, that's, you know, that happens, and then the next day, or two days later, this happens." Like, I don't, I don't know when the parents get involved, but there may need to be, there may need to be some more push on some of this discipline, that the, the parents get involved, and, yeah, I mean, if, if a principal calls me and says, "You need to come get your son, because they're behaving like X, Y, and Z, and we just can't handle it," and I have to go do it, if I have to do that one, two, three days, and, you know, four or five, like, that might put a little, little pressure on him, on them. I guess for me, I just want to ensure that we are taking the appropriate steps, we're not letting kids kind of rule the roost, and we just kind of, we, we kind of move forward to ensure the safety, right? And, and to your point, Dr. Pierce, yes, we hear about, you know, bigger things, or egregious stuff, and not the other, you know, 700 kids that did just fine that day, but, again, or, or the little, little things, right? But, yeah, ultimately, you know, those little things do disrupt the other students' learning as well, so, as long as, you know, for me, we're, we're...
Our schools are great, let's make it a little tighter.
And I guess what I would say, from a policy perspective, right? Are there, you know, are there things in the policy that you think are conveying that we don't have those high expectations? Or questions about where the parents are involved? Because all of it is spelled out, like, really detailed in the, in the, in the policy, which is what the board sets.
But again, Mike, how do we, how do we gauge a polit, how do we gauge an attitude?
Hold on, Dr. Miller.
The whole, the whole point here is, we have rules and regulations that set what we do. We have, we've given our administration, and our building administrations, the tools to go do this. Now, if you don't like the way they're doing that, then obviously, we have a bigger issue. But the bigger issue is, you know, these kids, you know, you, we hear the what. We don't hear the why, or the how, or everything else. I mean, again, to your point, there's a thousand things in here that go into how they got to these points. But for us to say, "Okay, we're gonna start tightening the screws," as you say, to these kids, I just don't, I don't get it. I don't, I don't see the, the point. I, I, we want to give our, our administration, our teachers, the tools they need to, to reprimand the kids. Now, again, if that means they need to remove the kid from the class, then they need to remove the kid from class.
In the background, 20 minutes.
Totally, which, says, says you, okay?
We hear that all the time.
You know, Mike, you know what I love, you, you, every time I hear this, I hear this all the time, "You must have some other email chain that I don't get on, I don't get any of this stuff."
Well, Mike, I'm in schools a lot.
Oh, well, congratulations.
All right, so...
I'm happy for you.
So let's, let's, go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Miller.
Can I, can I, can I jump in really quick? Because I think, I think to the point that, that everyone's making here, and I think actually, Dr. Pierce made a great point, is, is we hear things. And, but I think what we need, and, and the action item that I see moving forward here is, is I think we need to start to record and, and take, keep a record of how many of these different level, particularly the higher level events are occurring in each school, and how often they're occurring, and also, what is the, what is, generally speaking, what are the outcomes? Our suspension, how many times are we having altercation, and how many result in suspensions? Because the fact is, is right now, we can't say whether we're getting better or we're getting worse. We have anecdotal things, we hear things from people, but we have no data, at least that I've seen. And maybe if we could see the data, then we can know, okay, is, is, are things getting worse? And if things are getting worse, then certainly, yeah, we probably need to take more of an approach that, that, that Mike is saying, we need to maybe be stricter. If we're seeing things are getting better, then we don't need to get stricter, we're working in the right direction. But right now, I don't think we have good data. And if we don't have good data, then it makes it difficult to make good choices. And so we need to get better data on what is going on, and seeing what the trend is. And it's not an anecdotal trend, it's a recorded trend. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, so, Dr. Miller, we do have, we do have data that we collect throughout the year, but we're even more, being more, more robust with it this year. So in those, so our director of student services, BJ Wilson, is collecting, and working with, with our IT department to be collecting data in regards to discipline, both exclusionary discipline and school suspensions, those types of things by school. And we're doing that on a monthly basis and tracking that, so we'll have that. We do an annual board report on discipline and behavior, I believe it's in June, is when we usually do that. It's either May or June, but we want to have some of that data. Additionally, what we're, what many of the schools who are, are, are positive behavior interventions, PBIS schools, utilize systems, one of those systems, and it's, I'm sorry, it's an acronym, and I don't know the, the letters for it, but it's Swiss. And, and what that does is, that not only tracks the, the major conduct, but it also tracks minor incidents, so that schools are able to say, "Okay, on the playground, we're having a lot of incidents of rough, rough, rough play. Where is this happening? Are there certain times, are there certain groups?" Tracking that data in ways that they can then put in interventions into place. Again, not interventions to replace consequences, that's not what we're saying at all, but if I know that, "Hey, I need more supervision on this side of the, of the school, in these hallways at this time," I put it there, so that we can create safe environments. So there's all of those different components of that, but we are, we're working really hard on that, on that, on that precise thing, because we want to make sure that we're tracking the, the behavioral discipline, or behavioral data, disciplinary data, in a way that tells us exactly that. Are there strategies that are being used more effectively, some places and other places? And are, you know, are potentially there places where maybe there's less tolerance for certain behavior, and we're seeing less of that behavior? And so we're really using that to, to analyze that, and it's been a major push in student services this year.
Perfect. I, I think that, that goes to, I mean, if we've got data, we can look and see, to Mike's point, are we being more lenient, or are we not? We're not, we're not basing things on any anecdotal, but we can actually specifically see, so I, I think that information will be incredibly helpful.
Yeah, and I guess to add to that data kind of discussion is, we, we do not, as a district or as schools, have metrics that keep us from providing, I don't want to say the right discipline, but I know, as a, I know as a district, we have like, we want to be under like 4% in our discipline category on one of our goals, or something. There's nothing that keep, like, there's nothing that, that keeps people from saying, "Well, I'm getting a little high," I mean, I, like, I want to make sure that that stuff's not hindering anyone from making the decisions they, they want to make, or seeing it like, differently.
Good, good question, and good point, and neither do we. What that metric that we track is exclusionary discipline. It's not consequences, it's exclusionary discipline, it's suspension.
Okay.
Now, there is, and has been, a push to ensure that we are not just relying on exclusionary discipline as the, as the way that we deal with things. So what I mean by that is, why the state looks at that is, you know, we, we have a responsibility to educate students. They're, they are like entitled, right? By law, to a free and appropriate education. And so, and I'm not talking about our district specifically, but like, when the state looks, you know, in recent years, looking at exclusionary discipline, and even across the country, concerns about our schools just saying, you know, "You're, you're behaving badly, you're out of here, you're suspended, you're suspended," and that the, really, the, the main strategy was suspension. And while there are times where removing students from the learning environment and not allowing them to be around other students is absolutely appropriate, when there's safety and all these kind of things, it's not, like, it, people in the past, and I'm not saying people in this district specifically, but in education, kids were getting suspended for attendance. So you've got three unexcused absences, we're gonna, I'm just making that, suspend you for a week. Well, that's non, that doesn't really make sense, right? The consequence doesn't necessarily fit the, the issue, and like, what is that accomplishing? And kid, and it's violating students' right to free and appropriate education. So we do look at exclusionary discipline, and what our message, and, and, you know, Matt and I talk about this often, is what we don't, we do not want the message to be, "You can't exclude students." That's not what our policy says, and that's not what we say. Exclusionary discipline isn't like typically the first step, unless there's certain behaviors that warrant that, surely, but there's other interventions and other consequences that can be used as well. And so I, I would just say, like, there's kind of a balance there, where we do look at exclusionary discipline, and we look at it like our rate compared to the rest of the state, or our schools, like, within our system, to see, do we seem to have outliers? Where there's some schools with a lot of exclusionary discipline, and others with, without, because we want to be consistent in our approach, and use exclusionary discipline appropriately when it's warranted, and not use it when it isn't warranted. Would you add anything to that?
Not, not too much. Again, I think that, that disciplinary rate, again, is, it is just, I mean, it's calculated by the total number of students you serve in a year, and how many of those students experienced a day of exclusion, or, or, one incident of exclusionary, that's the rate. So it has nothing to do with how long you're out, it has nothing to do with any other behavior, so it, and, and we, we absolutely, absolutely, absolutely would never say to a principal, "Don't suspend that student, because that's gonna impact our disciplinary rate." That's not what we, that, that never is the...
I'm glad to hear that, thank you.
Okay. Where we have had discussions is, does that suspension warrant 20 days out?
Sure.
Or 10 days? Like, we'll have those discussions with the principals, to say what, what makes sense in, you know, to, with this. So we will have those discussions, but, again, it, it's not, the disciplinary rate is really there, because we, we think that if we have really sound-running schools, and really great programs for kids, that we won't be, have to suspend students from those programs, and we use that as a metric to guide that. But there are just gonna be times when kids need to be suspended, and that's, and that rate is not going to stop us from doing that.
So I've got...
It just doesn't enter into it.
Is there, I mean, it doesn't always have to be a suspension either, it can be something kind of creative, like, I don't know, like, maybe there's a, a study hall room, and maybe it's the opposite, maybe they have to go to more school, or something, they have to stay after school and be in a study hall, or something, that's almost more toward, like, if I was a kid, and they got, that was my punishment, that would be the worst thing ever, right? Like, "Oh, I gotta stay in more school." So, so it could be like, maybe more creative, or it, it doesn't necessarily have to be like kicking them out of school, because, you know, that's not always the answer, but, but I do, you know, so, I mean, like, like this last month, and I was, I don't, I don't want to name the schools, but, generally speaking, I just want everyone to know that. Our schools are great. I mean, they are really great, and we're talking about only a few different, only a few cases. But I, I was on the phone, or, or in person, with four different schools about situations where, you know, like, kids are doing things and being removed, and then they're right back in, doing the same thing again. They're being removed, right back in, doing the same thing again. It's like, why is this happening? Like, why, it's obviously not working, the, this approach. And, and those particular, again, generally speaking, our kids are, our schools are wonderful.
Just, just one thing on that, like, so what my hope would be, right? Is if you're getting calls from staff members about a concern, I'm hoping that you're communicating that to me, so I can actually look into that concern, because that's, that's my job. If we've got a staff member, and I don't need to know the name of the staff member or anything, but, right? And they're contacting you, saying, "I'm concerned that discipline isn't being handled appropriately at my school by my administrator," then, then we need to know that, so we can follow up and look into it. And, yeah.
Some of them do know about it.
So what, what I gather from this conversation so far is, we, we feel like, as a district, we have the right policies in place. We feel like the administrators are using their best judgment in their schools to execute that discipline, and there's no metric, no nothing, that keeps them from implementing whatever discipline they see fit for that situation. So, with, with, within, within policies, so, we've, we've removed as many of the roadblocks as we can, so if there's, whatever issues are going on in the school, the administrators need to work, work through that, and if, and if, if a staff member's having issues, or if they don't, like, whatever that situation is, then that's, that's a one-off and needs to be dealt with, but...
And when we become aware of misinterpretation or misapplication of policy, then we work, we work through that. I'll give an example recently, there's, there's somewhere in the policy, I won't be able to point to it exactly, but it, it talks about, you know, when there's like this really egregious safety-related behavior, how long the exclusion can be. And it says up to a term. In, it kind of surfaced that that was being interpreted, that, for example, if you did a bad thing to that level, three days before the end of the semester, then the longest that you could be excluded would be for the remainder of that semester, which would be for three days. That's not what the policy says, that, that doesn't, that's not logical, because that would mean like, basically, you'd be a smart kid if you waited and did your bad thing right before the end of the semester, because then your exclusion would be super short. But if you did it at the beginning of a semester, you could be excluded for the entire semester. A term means for that, for the length of a semester, doesn't matter when you do that behavior. So there are times, I'm just pointing out, there are times when, as we're working through, and principals are working through, and even our staff here at the district are working through, like, if it comes to, I mean, it, like, these weird kind of interpretation differences will come up, and we'll correct them. I don't know if that makes any sense, what I was trying to explain, but, I mean, we, we don't, we want to have a system where we have high expectations for students, we have good, sound tools for holding students accountable to those high expectations, and we have clarity within the system, and our principals feel supported in enacting the policies that we have.
And, and I would just, I would just add to that, I think, you know, again, Gabe, you're kind of painting the picture, that we have good policies, we have, even with all of that, I mean, I... even with all of that, I mean, I know we have some, some staff members in the room, you go home every night to a staff member, like, it, it still happens. Even with all of that, this behavior is still happening. Um, one, I mean, one of the things that's been really challenging for administrators is, is social media and, and the fact that it's really, it's really popular to film fights and put them on social media. Encouraging, it encourages fight, and they're having to deal with that all the time. I mean, it's just, it's a, it's a challenging, challenging situation. So even though we have all those things, we know in working with our principals, all the things that they're trying to, to, to deal with, and we want to make sure they're using those tools. To your point, and I, you know, Mike, I, I think that it's natural, it's a very natural thing to say, we just have to be more punitive and that will solve it. And that may be very true for your kids, it may be very true for my kids. There are, we, you know, nineteen thousand school, students in our district. So for many of those students, that is not going to be the answer. That is not going to help them in any way, shape or form. And we've talked sometimes of, of, of John Hattie's work and effect size and student achievement. We want high student achievement. One of the lowest effect sizes is removal from school for discipline. Like, it, it doesn't help. It doesn't create a situation. So I know that there, it, you know, I, I, we deal with it every single day. You know, if, okay, so should we just hammer the kids more? If we do it, would they stop? And that just has not been borne out in research over and over and over again. Um, and so it's not, again, that we, a, a lot of the things you'll see on the, on the continuum are strategies to implement, to address those behaviors, to provide the consequence, the appropriate consequence to get the behavior to change. And I think where our teachers and where I personally get most frustrated is, we just want the behavior to change. We, we just want the students to, to come to school and, and learn and not engage in misconduct that, that disrupts the learning of, of, of other students. And, and, and unfortunately, you know, we haven't, we don't have, I mean, again, removal from school is, is very warranted sometimes, and sometimes it gives the appropriate cooling off time for the appropriate break for a teacher in a classroom to be able to, to get back to business. And I think that those are perfectly fine. It, it does not necessarily prove that, prove out that that's going to make a difference for that student, that's going to change behavior. And, and so that's where we run into that a little bit because I, I, I agree, what we always want to be doing is addressing. And, and the last part I just would say is that one of the areas where I, I provide the guidance to, particularly our secondary principals is around, are we including the families? Are we talking to parents? Are you picking up the phone and letting parents know that their child is behaving this way at school? Because we can sometimes fall into a trap, particularly at high school, of thinking that, well, these guys, you know, these guys are close to adulthood, they should be able to manage themselves. And so I think there are lots of times where we're not including the parents to the extent that we should be. Um, and, and we need to do more of that because parents can help us with that. And as we all know, being parents, we want our children to come to school and do what they need to do. And so it's, it's all of these things layered, it's very complex, but, um, that would be the, thank you.
Can I, it'll take two seconds and I don't think it will create any more discussion, but Matt, you were just touching on exactly what's been on my mind this whole time. The next time we talk about behavior, I would love to see some data, whether it be qualitative, quantitative, both would be great. Um, from district staff members, from our principals, from our teachers, reporting on what is the source of the behavior problems because it's, we do have good policies in place, we have good procedures in place, and yet, Matt, you're reporting tonight that the first thing your principals are telling you is that the biggest concern they have now at the beginning of the year is behavior. When I was running for office, that's the first thing we talked about, that you said the biggest concern for staff is behavior. So we have good policies in place, we have good procedures, and yet the behavior persists. And so Dr. Miller will tell us that if we don't clearly understand what the problem is and we're treating the symptoms, we're never going to get better, we're never going to improve. And so I'd love to have some information on what exactly is going on. If it is aspects like social media, that will give us the tools as a board to be able to discuss, well, where do we go from here? How do we limit things like that? If it's not having parents involved, I mean, I'd be interested, I kind of only looked over the 24 pages of this policy, and I'd be interested now to comb through it and say, where are parents involved? And I would, if we're going to be really drill in anywhere, that's where I would say we do it, is we make sure that it's mandatory that parents are informed. I don't want to call out my own kid, but I came home this week and told me that she'd been to the principal's office and I haven't heard yet from the principal. And that's not to call that person, that was a very minor thing, and I don't think it was necessarily needed. I'm glad she told me about it, but I, I still haven't heard. And I understand that that's, they have a huge workload, so I don't know if it's just a simple, like, parent square thing, like, just so you know, your kid was at the administration office today. Um, but something along those lines. We need to start being creative with how do we partner with the parents more. I think that we'll see improvements there if we can start drilling into what's really causing our behavior problems.
Thank you. So, um, I know we still have another little segment in this, this section, um, so I don't know if there's any other comment, but it's comments, but it sounds like we, we want to get some of the da, the data so we can look at it and see how we're doing so we can down the road make some more informed decisions. It also sounds like we have strong policy in place. We have administrators who have minimal roadblocks in determining the correct course of behavior for their students. And so I think ultimately, when I thought about this topic as to one I, I wanted to talk about, it was really kind of that, like, do we have the right policy in place and have we eliminated as many of the roadblocks that we can? There's no metrics that keep people from doing anything. You, principal, follow the policy and guide it based on your, your best decision and, and that's, that's where I wanted to understand, so.
I just had one last quick question on the school safety that we, you know, we kind of do it all to discipline, we never went back to it. I was just saying, if it's okay with the board, my ask would be that we have a dedicated person on, on all the entrances at high schools at those times. And that, that'd be my ask. If it's, if the board agrees with that, I think that'd be a great thing.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that, I just don't know if, are we okay to make that ask here?
Yeah, well, what we can do is certainly at, at an upcoming principals meeting, I mean, we, every school develops a safety plan to how they're going to handle things such as evacuations, lockdowns, and all of those types of things. And, and a supervision plan should be, should be part of those safety plans. So we can talk with them about that and, and about, and just gauge where, where people are at or if there's any problems. I do know that when we were talking up at Southridge, just about their, particularly their back entrances at lunchtime, there was some, some concern about the ability to staff those in a, in a, in a way that would, would, would be able to, to monitor them closely. We, we talked about some other options, but um, I can gather some information together so that we have just kind of an understanding of, of what is in place, and if there are some of those gaps, we can address those.
Thank you.
Perfect. So, we, the last little piece to, um, behavior and discipline was quickly discussing, um, just staff discipline and a general, like, the general consensus here. Um, so we'll run through that before we, we finish out.
Okay, so, um, uh, staff discipline, uh, we do have a policy on, uh, staff discipline as well as collective bargaining agreements. So, uh, I think the overall, you know, policy speaks to the fact that we have, um, expectations for staff to fulfill their job responsibilities, to follow district policy, um, and to behave and conduct themselves in a, you know, uh, appropriate manner. And so the policy speaks to the sorts of behavior or conduct or action, um, that could result in disciplinary action of a staff member, um, and, uh, what the, the due process rights of staff members are. And it speaks to, alludes to the different, uh, bargaining agreements that are in place, um, with different staff groups. So, the, I, I think, when, when a complaint comes forward about a, a staff member, really the process is, or, or something, um, you know, surfaces in whatever way, um, there's, uh, that complaint is, is received and, uh, there's really a decision point about whether, whether the, based on the allegation, um, whether the staff member needs to be, um, I mean, the incident needs to be investigated, always, and there's a decision regarding whether the staff member may need to be placed on paid leave pending investigation. I mean, I think the overarching idea is, you know, you're sort of like assumed innocent until proven otherwise, right? And that you have due process rights and contractual rights as an employee. Um, so sometimes we get complaints that are more on sort of the minor end, they still might warrant investigation to determine whether discipline of the staff member is warranted, but the staff member isn't placed on any sort of leave pending investigation. Other times, the allegation is, is egregious enough to warrant, uh, leave, um, and will place the employee on paid leave pending the investigation. Our HR department, um, in consultation with legal counsel, um, works with the appropriate leadership of the collective bargaining unit, uh, in terms of, like, setting up the initial meeting and launching the investigation. Our HR department typically is the body that leads that investigation. There are times where, um, we might employ excuse me, independent investigator, for example, from our risk pool, just if it were that sort of a really, really egregious allegation of some sort. But really, it's all kind of spelled out here. And typically, typically what happens at the, um, closing of the investigation, kind of based on the facts of that investigation, disciplinary action will or will not be imposed, and then the level of discipline, um, is really determined based on what the, and the findings of the investigation were. So typically, uh, all of the collective bargaining agreements have, um, what's the word I'm looking for? A gradual?
A process.
Uh, it's like the, yes.
Progressive.
Progressive, thank you. That's a progressive discipline, like, first time this, you know, maybe it's like a, a verbal warning, um, then a written warning, then is that worth continuing that behavior or something? It would then like escalate to a, um, higher level of discipline. That's not to say if there's something super egregious that has happened, you don't always start with a level one discipline. It can be all the way up to an including termination, depending on the situation. So just like with student discipline, I mean, there's processes, there's procedures, there's collective bargaining agreements, there's due process, legal rights that employees have, we follow all of that, and it's very situational, depending on what the situation is and what the, you know, that, that then informs the, the level of discipline. Uh, typically, the board, you know, will be communicated when there's something that's maybe a very egregious allegation that requires that an employee be put on paid leave pending investigation. Um, and in all of these things, I, I, again, I think that what might happen at, at some times is if, if we've got staff members that are complaining to individual board members about like a fellow employee, um, you might be hearing part of the story, but not the whole story. And typically, it's not the board's role to be like involved in the actual investigation, um, procedure or anything like that, so I don't know what else to say on the topic of staff discipline, but that's, yeah.
How many of our, most of our staff are bargaining unit staff, right? Because it's a little, it's a little bit different between non-bargaining and bargaining when it comes to.
That's correct. We, we have, um, what's the, what's the word? Non-represented, um, what's the word? Uh, we have some staff members who are not, who don't have a, they might have a professional association, but not a collect, they're not part of a union. Most of our staff units are parts of unions,
Right.
but not, not all staff members. There's non-represented staff, and administrators don't belong to a union, they have a professional association, but not like a union.
Yeah. Okay. And we, um, when a, when a staff member's going through just a process of, of discipline, we don't just move them to another department or, I mean, right, they
Every situation's very, very different and individualized. So how we, um, how we, how, how we, you know, it, there's not really a one-size-fits-all approach for how we might handle a particular situation. Um, I think if, if, if board members have questions about a particular situation, um, you, I know, we shouldn't talk about it.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you certainly contact me about,
Yeah.
about it, and I can, you know, provide some additional information, but, um,
You've been great about doing that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think I need to say anything, because it's the same, the same feeling I had, this feeling is, I don't need to repeat it.
Dr. Miller, any questions?
Nope, not on this topic.
All right. Any other questions? All right. We will go ahead and move forward to our final agenda item of the night. Deputy successor superintendent search timeline and process. Dr. Pierce will fill us in on the latest and greatest.
Okay, so Gabe and I met, um, at the, at the last board meeting, the board authorized, um, Gabe and I to meet with the search firm, uh, people, and we did that over the break. And, uh, they have, uh, provided the, you know, formal proposal now, they're working up the actual kind of contract. And then there's a suggested draft timeline, and, you know, there's obviously, I mean, one of the most important things a board does, hire a superintendent, right? So obviously, there's a high level of board involvement and community involvement in this whole process. So we want to look over this suggested timeline with all of the processes, make sure the board's available uh, during all of these dates. There's a couple of decision points you're going to need to make about dates. Um, but let me just kind of go over this. So where we are right now is, they're working on the pre-announcement of the deputy successor superintendent position, right? The, the idea is that this person, just to recap, will be, um, hired this spring to start July 1st. And during the 24, 25 school year, they will serve as the deputy superintendent overseeing operations in the district, and then they will become superintendent when I retire in June of 2025. So we're hiring both for a deputy superintendent for next year to be part of the cabinet team while I'm still the superintendent, and then for the the future superintendent because they'll be, become that person. So, um, the, where we are in the process is the, um, to, they, they launch, uh, they being the, the search firm develops, they have developed a leadership profile survey, right? We have links to that in English and Spanish, and, um, based on the timeline, we would communicate out from the district that this process is beginning and invite people to take this survey. And that will be on the district website and we'll do a push communication. Communication's all teed up and ready to go, and we can send it out tomorrow. Then that leadership profile survey is open for a specified period of time. Um, part of their process too is to build some focus groups with different stakeholders, um, staff groups, community groups, and also connecting with individual board members to, um, to seek input in addition to the survey. Then the, um, so that, the, the proposal that that happens on January 22nd and 23rd, these stakeholder groups. So, um, we would invite people, communicate about it, invite people to go to these sessions and provide, um, the, the, this search firm asks four questions, they're essentially the same four questions that are part of this leadership survey, but it's an opportunity to meet in person with people. Then they take all of that information gathered from the survey and from the focus groups, um, and it helps inform the actual posting that says these are the professional qualifications that we're seeking. Um, these are the strengths and, you know, opportunities that the district presents, and then that brochure is finalized and approved by the board and it's, it's put out. It, it's already been, like, it's already on some pre-announcement sites, like the Wasta site and other sites, um, but there's not a brochure yet saying like, this is what the board's looking for, et cetera. Okay, then, um, that, once that posting brochure is finalized, it's distributed through their nationwide network and emailed and all of those kinds of things. Um, and then there's a work, a board work session to prepare for the interview phase. Um, the application deadline would be March 8th. Um, the screening report would then go to the board. Uh, there needs to be an executive session scheduled with the board and the search firm consultants. So you can look over all of the applicants we can and select the five or six that you want to invite. and select the five or six that you want to invite for preliminary interviews. Um, proposing that the preliminary interviews, which would be done in an open session. So the board would be here at the, at the dais. Uh, the candidate would come and sit here in front of the board. That type of board room would be, um, hoping for people to come and observe the process. And um, the board interviews the, the candidates. Then um, the board reviews all of that and decides which of those candidates they want to invite back for final interviews. So kind of you split the finalists. Um, then the final interviews, so with that spring break right in here, so Nick, we just need to talk about your availability and that kind of thing because um, obviously, all the board needs to be able to be, able to participate in this whole process, right? So you would do the preliminary interviews and then the final interviews, which are really full day, but interviews, um, not necessarily full day for the board, but full day for the candidate. Um, either the week before spring break or the week after spring break. Um, so that's kind of the big picture of the timeline. So if that, A, are you have questions about the process? And B, um, we just want to nail down that these dates work for everybody.
January thirty-first up there says process finalized and approved by board. Do we need to have a, do we need to put together a quick meeting to do that? Cause that's, that'd be like a separate meeting. So I don't know if that's like a, would you like a Zoom meeting to approve that or is it?
Well, um, so we can't really just do a Zoom meeting, like a full board meeting.
Yeah, like I feel like.
Or you mean like you and me?
No, so, cause that has to be approved, it says approved by the board, so do we add a, do we need to add a?
I think, I don't think that it necessarily means it has to be like formal board action, but like the board, like you as board president, you know, could approve it. I mean, we could send it out and ask for any individual feedback and then you could approve it. I don't think it needs to have that, yeah. But just the board, before it would be sent out, the board would need to be like, yes, this is, okay. So um, I just want to pull up the board meeting calendar. So I think where the meetings and that kind of part starts is um, like the focus groups, those are run by the search firm people. So like that January twenty-second and twenty-third doesn't need to involve the board. Um, that's their data collection and they're going to summarize all of that and, and give it to you. Um, but um, so the February twenty-second, I think is where there does need to be a, a work session, and I need to find out whether this means an executive session or a, like more of a study session to prepare for the interview phase. Um, around February twenty-second.
Is that one possible to do the twenty-eighth and just do it before, do it before our normal board meeting?
Yes.
I don't know if that name's flexible, but I imagine everybody here would probably rather.
Mm-hmm. Just get our board calendar out here.
Would you guys rather do that before a board meeting than do an extra?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, I would. Okay, so February twenty-eight for the mid-search report and board work session prep, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, you know, like, so before a board meeting, like do a study session, okay.
Thirteenth is a board meeting already.
So we would just schedule the executive session on the thirteenth? And the search firm consultants would be part of that? And that's where you would get the, all the like written applications and get to determine who's coming in to interview.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then um, the preliminary interviews, so those really can't happen on board meeting dates. Those need to be, you know, scheduled separately.
The preliminary interview where, where, where we're at the diet, the.
Mm-hmm, and you're, it's like a public first phase interview of the five to six candidates that are coming in.
So March twentieth is a Wednesday, March twentieth is a Wednesday, March twenty-first is a Thursday.
Would it be both nights? Is that the suggestion?
Oh, both, okay, both nights.
Yeah, cause it's about, it's about a fifteen-minute interview for each candidate, so I think you might have six candidates. And then, and then it's an executive session or after the final to say, okay, of these, who do we want to move forward as finalists?
And these are, these are face-to-face, so if a candidate's from.
Milwaukee.
They're, they're coming in, then, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So do those dates work for everyone?
Those will.
Okay, so we're good with March twentieth and twenty-first. Good. Um, so then, kind of the question is final interviews. Um, do you want those to happen the, the next week? And there is a board meeting that week already on the twenty-seventh, so we'd have to avoid that day. So it would be either twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-eighth or wait until after spring break and do eight, nine and eleven. We can't do the tenth because there's a board meeting.
I am traveling on the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth?
What's that, is it all three days? It's all three days, so.
Yeah.
Michael will be on the twenty-eighth, so then.
Then after spring break. What are the dates of spring break?
Spring break's the first week of April.
So the first to the sixth?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, first through the fifth, right.
Okay.
So eighth, ninth and eleventh?
Dr. Miller?
Oh, sorry, I added on that. Yeah, so I will be, I will likely be gone for spring break, but like the eighth, ninth, tenth, that week following, I'll be around in April. I should, at least right now.
Okay. Sounds like that's.
The eighth, ninth and eleventh?
Eighth, ninth and eleventh, one will all be.
Okay. Okay, those are really, that's really the key things we needed to, to nail down so that they can get this finalized and we can get things on the calendar.
Um, two, two quick um, comments. One, the, um, the search, the postings, all that stuff will go nationwide. So coast to coast, north to south, so it's going to be out there for anyone to apply to. And then, do you remember, are we able to share the cost of, the proposed cost of the firm?
Um, I have it in the proposal.
Is there an issue with sharing it that you, that you see? I don't see any.
I think so.
Was like, was like twenty, wasn't it like twenty-five thousand for the firm to do all this? Twenty-five, yeah. Yeah, so.
And I mean, that's pretty typical and I, you know.
That's actually lower than I expected.
It's a, I mean, it's a really important process, obviously. And um, you know, the, the, it's very typical for districts, especially districts our size, to work with search firms to make sure that there's a really good, solid process, that there's lots of opportunity for community input and stakeholder engagement and so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the rest of the board knew it was about twenty-seven thousand, community knows, but yeah, we. Good. Any questions about the timeline, anything?
I think so.
All right, well, that will conclude our agenda. And we will be moving into executive session uh, for superintendent cabinet performance discussion for forty, forty minutes, nine, nine-thirty, forty minutes, is that? Twenty and, twenty and an extra check or?